Good morning. Can we, we're going to bring the meeting to order and we would like to salute to the flag if everybody would stand with us, please. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I know she just gave it to me. It was really a nice gift. Thank you. Okay, let it be known that all commissioners are present this morning. Are there going to be any agenda changes today?
No, they're not.
Okay. In that case, we will go to the public comment period.
No long story today. We'll just get to the, get to some updates I want to give you regarding some decisions that you made. Dollar General Store is first off. The Dollar General Store, looks like they, they put it out to bid a second time. That ended on the 2nd of October. They missed the building envelope for the year, so it'll be next year before, before they start work on that. There is one problem and that is you specified that you wanted chips, wood chips on the ground there. And, and rock would be more appropriate. We do have heavy rains in West Point. If you look at the, if you look at the weather records from the CDF station there, you'll see that it comes down in deluges and it will displace that, it'll displace those wood Another, another thing that we have coming up is early next year, you're going to receive the general, general plan. I assume it's coming back from the, from the consultant and you're going to have a lot of meetings regarding that. So, decisions you may make today could affect, affect us next year. So, there's the two things that I wanted to talk to you about. You all look in good moods. I assume you had good Thanksgivings. Every year that I don't get stuffed and roasted is a good year for me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for items not on the agenda this morning?
I don't know. I don't think this is on the agenda. Seventeen point two-two point oh-one-oh, purpose. The RR zone is intended to provide lands for personal ranches in which residential use is primary land use. The RR zone is established to permit small-scale farming primarily for personal and not for the primary use of the property. Under seventeen point two-two point oh-six-oh, this chapter, A, the following uses are permitted in RR zone. Agricultural operations. As of January 1st, 2018, agricultural use is what cannabis falls under. Now, I can have a tasting room. I can have agricultural product sales. I can have agro-tourism. I can have educational equestrian facility, special events, child daycare. The following uses are permitted.
Mr. Wilson?
Temporary outdoor sales.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
We're kind of sitting here going, that kind of falls under our agenda item today when we're, if that's okay? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Oops. Still.
Is there any other further public comment for items not on the agenda?
Morning, Commissioners. Bill McManus, Hanford Hill. This may seem like a unnecessary rehash, but the way things have been going, and this is about the process, not about anything on the agenda item today. I feel compelled to express my feelings and the feelings of hundreds of others that I've talked to and discussed this issue with. It seems like there's been a total breakdown in the way the system is supposed to work. All the way back in September, we sat through two and a half agonizing days of testimony and discussion for the Planning Commission to come up with two alternatives that they sent forward with equal weight to the Board of Supervisors. When we finally got to the Board of Supervisors meeting, as soon as the first agenda item was opened, we immediately went to a discussion on the Tofanelli Plan. The, the item from the Planning Commission was not discussed. We went on to the next topic, which was the dispensary ordinance, which you had, we had discussed and you had recommendations on changing or modifying seventeen ninety-one. That was put off for 120 days. In the past month, the Board has canceled two meetings, seemingly expressing their, their thoughts that there is no rush on this. And we all know that there are certain deadlines that are quickly approaching. Now, if the county wants to tempt fate and, and rely on the good graces of the state, I'm sorry, did, did I lose your attention?
Well, I'm just, we're-
Or did you need to consult with-
I was kind of looking for consultation because we're kind of borderlining once again on the ordinance that we're going to be working on today. So, I know you're talking procedural and I understand where you're going with this.
Okay. And, and I should have prefaced my comments by thanking the Planning Commission for the time and effort they put into this. We now find ourselves at the direction of the Board, once again, coming back here with the Tofanelli Plan, which during the meeting was expressly asked, does this have to come back to the Planning Commission? And Mr. Maurer said, no, it does not need to come back here. Here we are. So-
Okay. It's kind of bordering and we're, we're getting into the ordinance.
As long as I'm on the right side of the borderline, let's, let's call it okay, you know?
I, but I, but I shut Mr. Wilson down because it was going over and I've got to be fair across the board.
All, all I'm asking is that for the work that you've already done, please-
Can we please be polite?
Please try to reemphasize your desires back to the Board. I know you have no power over them, but please try to get this back for a resolution as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay. Okay, so we're going to move into our consent agenda. We have two items there. Peter, do you have anything you would like to say on those items? No?
No, again, this would just be if there's, unless there were errors in the redrafting of those final resolutions, they could just be moved as a single item and dispensed with.
Okay. Do you, go ahead.
I do have a couple of things, but I, it's, they're not essential to the, to the sense of the resolution. I mean, just that you use the word "they" when it's a "she," but I, doesn't, if we can't change that on the consent, I don't have a problem with just passing it the way it is.
Okay. All right.
I have a couple of comments on the Resolution twenty seventeen point oh-eight-seven, which is the one involving Minerva Lamas.
Are we pulling the item then from consent?
Well, I have a comment on the resolution, the wording of it.
Okay, so unless, if there is an item that needs to be changed, we need to pull it from consent and address it individually. Do you want to pull that item from the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we are going to pull item two zero one seven dash zero eight seven for discussion. And now you can discuss it.
Okay. The same comment, it comes up twice. And under paragraph one, under the evidence, and under paragraph three, under the evidence, the last sentence is, for example, in the paragraph one, it says, "The March 27, 2017 email from the appellant to code compliance contained photographic evidence that the required corrections had begun to be made by the appellant and this constituted a good-faith effort on the part of the appellant to come into compliance with county code." It was more than that. The required corrections had been made. That was the evidence, not begun to be made. And it was more than just a good-faith effort. She got it done. And the same thing is true with respect to paragraph three. That's with respect to the fencing. She did get the fence up by the time. And so, I don't want this resolution to stand as some sort of precedent that good-faith efforts are sufficient when in this case, she completed what she was supposed to do within the time she was given.
I would agree with that change. So, is there, okay, we don't. I just want to know if we can clarify what the resolution should read instead then?
Well, I would make it read as follows. Under paragraph one, last sentence under evidence, "Ebbett Reed, the March 27, 2017 email from the appellant to code compliance contained photographic evidence that the required corrections had been made by the appellant." Period.
Okay. And then this would be the same under number three?
Under number three, it would read, "The March 27, 2017 email from the appellant to code compliance contained photographic evidence that the required corrections had been made by the appellant." Period.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to poll the Commissioners to make sure they're in agreement to this?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. So, we have to take a vote on that. Okay, so can we take a vote on the, well, we're going to just, can we vote on it amended or do we need to vote on making the change?
Well, I mean, you would vote on the resolution amended and treated separately from the other consent item.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to accept this resolution as amended?
I so moved.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-o on this one. Back to the consent agenda. Now, I'd like to get a motion to approve.
I so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five-o. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to go into our public hearing. Before we start, I just want to go over a couple of things on how I kind of see this going today. I know there's going to be people here that would probably like to speak because they have a job to get to and they want to get their comments in. At the last meeting that we held on the 29th, it was expressed to me quite a few times that we would rather hear your discussions before we give our public comment and know which direction you're going in. So, when we give our public comments, we can speak to your decisions before you vote. So, if we could, if I could do what, basically what the Supervisors do and give that first 30 minutes for public comment, we'll stop it there. We'll have our discussions, go back to public comment at the end. Public comment's going to be limited to three minutes today. And I'm going to be pretty strict about, we're going to stay on the topic of-
Have a choice before or after.
Yeah, they can have a choice before or after. You will only be able to speak once. So, for those that came early that wanted to get their comments in, now would be your chance to speak. If you want to reserve your comments until after we've had discussion with the Commissioners on the Title XVII regulating cannabis cultivation, then you have that option. So, is there anybody that would like to speak before we start our discussions today? Okay, that will tell you that everybody really wanted us to let them have that opportunity in the end last time and I feel better that we're doing it this way. So, we'll reserve public comment to the end and we're going to bring it to the Commissioners and we will start having our discussion today.
One of the things I'd like to see is, we've already done this once. I'm kind of angry that we're having to do it again.
Can we, I'm going to, yes.
Before we begin this, can we get a poll of the Board? And can we have that poll determine whether they're in favor of regulation or they're in favor of no regulation?
I don't know that that's a point of order for procedure, so-
It's basically-
It's a request.
Is your mind open to regulation or have you already made up your mind before you ever hear anything in this discussion today?
Okay, that's not technically a point of order, so we're going to keep moving forward here with your discussion. Can you please continue?
I would really like to send back to the Board what we originally said. We've worked on this already once. We've worked on a ban and we've worked on a resolution. If Mr. Tofanelli wants to change this, he needs to change this, not us.
Okay.
Speaking to that, I, I do think there are, the, the staff has done a great job.
I agree.
Of, and, and part of what they've done is they have codified what we did last time, which there are certain fine tunings that we need to do, but I think that, I'm, I'm as unhappy being here today as you are, but I do think that the, we are here, we are prepared to discuss this draft and I think we can, we can improve upon it and we can also stress where we, since the, the draft prepared by the staff, when there was a conflict between the Tofanelli suggestions and our proposal before, the Tofanelli approach has eclipsed our previous recommendations. And I think we need to stress where we feel that, that there can be a midpoint between the two and stress where we simply don't, do not agree with the Tofanelli approach or suggestions. The resolution that was passed three-two by the Board was for us to consider both what had come before the Supervisors that day, which was mainly the Tofanelli suggestions, and our recommendations. Consider both of those and propose a regulatory ordinance. So, I think our body has shown that it can work together and come up and refine things. And I think, given the, the timeframe that we have for the county to resolve it, I think there's a much better chance that the Board will reach a decision when they get this back and reach it cleanly and clearly and come up with a decent ordinance if we rehash it today.
I agree, but the Board-
Okay, Karen, I've got a note for you that says, please speak into the mic. Sorry.
I've got a smiley face on it.
Oh, wait, there's a smiley face on it and it says, "Thank you." I just want to make sure the public knows what that note was. Go ahead.
The Board originally asked us to come up with a ban. We came up with two alternatives and now they're telling us to come up with another I still say send the ban and I, what Tofanelli's asking for is, I think that the Board of Supervisors needs to work on this. We've done our job.
I'd like to hear from the other Commissioners, please.
Well, I was in favor of a ban before. I am still in favor of a ban and at present, I don't tend to vote to send a Tofanelli-type ordinance to the Board with a recommendation that it pass it, just so everybody knows where I am. However, I'm happy to work on what's presented to us to try to make it better product because the majority of the Commission may not agree with me. And I would like, and I think at some point later, to state in some detail the reasons why. I think a ban ought to be what this Commission recommends.
Okay. Commissioner Battelli?
I often agree with Mr. Wooster and this is one of those days. I cannot agree with the conclusion, but I agree with the thought process. I, I think we have to talk about it. I think we have to, well, for one thing, the state regulations keep changing every five minutes. As I read Julie's paperwork, and I'm not sure the, the, the average citizen has any clue. I certainly didn't have a clue until I read her reports. It's just what's going on. Literally every five minutes from the state, the rules are changing and, and for no other reason, we need to refine this thing. And yeah, the Board didn't do its job, but they did send it back to us. I think we need to complete it. And yes, regulation, I think, is the only answer, but as strict as possible within reason. That's my approach.
Okay, well, if we're going to be honest, I will tell you that I felt extremely slighted that we spent two and a half days working on this paperwork and one of the Supervisors brought a document that brought a complete halt to the Supervisors working on it. That document was named an EIR by a private consultant that was never certified and was sent back to our EIRs to be looked at. Cost us time and money and we spent two and a half days and weren't even considered as a part of being able to look at that. What if it was considered valid? We were sitting here for two and a half days making decisions and we weren't even considered in the process. I found that insulting. If this Planning Commission is not good enough to be a part of the county process, but we're good enough to send stuff back to us day after day after day to do a job that doesn't matter, I have a problem with that. I have a problem with it coming back and we sent two recommendations. Neither were discussed by any of the Supervisors, not the ban, not the recommendation. We were given a list that they voted on to send back to us with an ultimatum, my way or no way. Why are we working on it today?
I agree.
I, I felt very insulted. If this Planning Commission is not worthy of being considered in the process, why are we here working on it today? Why are we costing our staff time and money? Now, in the end, I believe that Peter and Julie put together an ordinance that is valid, needs to be worked on. There are some, we sent a bullet point forward. Eventually, an ordinance still had to be written and come back. That's been done. So, I do believe we need to work on the ordinance that was being given back to us so that the Supervisors have a valid document to vote on. We're running out of time rapidly and I would sure hate to see us not get this job done, not meet that February 14th timeline, because even when this goes back to the Supervisors and they look at it, there's still that advertising timeline before it goes into effect. It's not like we have a lot of time to do this. So, I think we work on it. I think we send it back to the Supervisors. I think we send it back and tell them to please consider our recommendations. Don't ignore us. If you don't want to look at what we're doing, then don't send it back for us to work on again. I mean, it, it's, it's replication. It's, it's the public's time. People taking off work to be here for two and a half days, the same as myself and others that have jobs here. So, that's kind of how I feel. Karen, I would like to work on it. I think the Commissioners are willing to work on it. I think we need to send back a finished product again. We now have a written ordinance to send back as a finished product. I'm not opposed to what Commissioner Wooster said, but I want to send them both back again. And let's just hope and pray that they actually discuss it, deliberate it, and vote on it.
I'd like to point out that the official motion from the Supervisors that was approved three to two was not the Tofanelli way or no way. It was consider what Tofanelli suggested and consider what we had recommended before and recommend a regulatory ordinance. So, I feel absolutely no constraint. I, I think we are to come up with the best ordinance we can with some view as to what might get past the Board of Supervisors and, and go from there. I do think, I think it's, it was good that Commissioner Wooster has said what, what, how he feels about the subject going in, because I think, especially for members of the public that are sitting out there, trying to figure out, well, what does this guy really mean when he's asking this question or that question, this sort of thing? I, I have prepared suggestions and on the, the cover of those suggestions, I've set out, straight out, that my goal, my main goal is that Calaveras County will have the ability to carry out strict control of and relief from the extensive damages to all aspects of the county's environment, the result from the illegal and reckless cultivation of cannabis. But I do feel that the only way we can do this is through Measure C funds. And so, I'm, I'm looking at, at, trying to come up with an ordinance that will have sufficient fair regulation of legal grows and yet have sufficient legal grows to raise the Measure C funds so we can go after, effectively go after the illegal grows as well as regulate the, the, the legal grows. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, hold on.
No, don't need that, but I appreciate the thought.
Okay, so what my intent to hear today is, I realize you have written your, your suggestions and regulation, but I would like to work off of the county's ordinance. We will go chapter by chapter. You can insert what your recommendations are at that time because nobody in here today has had time to review and read it properly. So, I want to work off of what the county has done. And we will start, and we can start with page one if you would like.
Page one, is that of the packet, is that the document?
That is of the ordinance.
Of the ordinance, okay.
I'd appreciate if we could do it section by section so that people who have, are looking at, at my materials can see the county materials and my suggestions and not have to cross-reference. If we can do it that way, instead of by pages, I think it'll avoid confusion.
His handout is, you want to get a copy? He put it up there on the counter.
Well, I'll just start off since everybody's shuffling papers right now.
Point of, point of, point of order, excuse me? Is the Planning Director going to be giving a presentation or are you just going to be jumping right into it?
Yeah, on his staff report, he will, yes. You're correct. Thank you.
It's fine because it is procedure. She's right. Point of order is he should be doing his stuff. Peter, want to talk to us?
Well, sure. Not a whole lot else to say. We have presented to you a draft ordinance that we believe incorporates both the Board's direction and your prior bullet point list, as pointed out by Commissioner Ladish, where there were conflicts between the two. We went with the suggestions by Mr. Tofanelli. Our, our hope is we can get this done today. I think that's also the goal of the Planning Commission. I think that the best way to do this is to focus on a policy issue and not get too down into the weeds of the, you know, actual wordsmithing. But clearly, if there's something that you feel is, you know, that the words mean certain things that need to be clarified, then, you know, that's where we need to go. Just for the public service, copies of Supervisor, or Commissioner Ladish's documents, it looks like they've all been sort of dispersed through the, the audience. We made forty copies of them. If we run out, if you could share, that would be helpful. Also, I passed out, and there's copies there, a sort of a cheat sheet of where you can find the individual, the two-page document. I also passed out copies to each of you, looking for specific provisions that were in both the list that Mr. Tofanelli presented, which was part of the packet, as well as the bullet point list that was created by staff following your prior meeting on this issue. So, we just, they're basically in order of the list. They weren't numbered or anything, so they sort of jump around, but we tried to make sure we incorporate each one of those provisions. Also, at the end are the specific mitigation measures and where those are, are included as well. I also passed out to you, I did not have enough copies for public, but it's just an informational, information, map that shows where the zoning is that would, you know, would be permitted based on 50 acre parcels and the APA1 and GF zones. It shows the location in the county. The second page, the second map, shows where they abut- The second page, the second map, shows where they abut a residentially zoned parcel and where a discretionary review would be required under the recommendations by Mr. Tofanelli. Um, with that, I think the best thing to do is dive into the, um, the ordinance, and we'll be available to answer any questions. Julie, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I don't.
Okay. So, with that, turn it back over to you.
Okay. Um, so, let's just dive in and go to work.
So, in purpose and intent, I think it's important in B to make sure that we are talking about medical cannabis cultivators. So, sorry about putting in a word, but that's, that should be put in the appropriate places. Also...
I don't, I don't know, okay, so why would we be referencing it as medical?
It's med.
It's both.
It's both.
These people aren't growing it medicinally per state anymore.
Then, then, B is talking about, also allow commercial cannabis cultivators. I think when we're talking about commercial, we need to say medical in our intent.
But they're, but they're not medical anymore.
Let me, let me, let me just, can I clarify you a little bit?
Yeah.
So, there, either medical or adult use can be commercial or personal. You can have a commercial adult use, it's an A-type license. You can have a commercial medical, it's an M-type license. And then, there are the exceptions to licensure where individuals, um, can grow up to six plants, and there's also exceptions where you can grow for your own medical use.
So, what non-medical, commercial grows are we talking about here?
So, the direction we have is to only, from the board, is to only allow medical commercials, only M-type licenses.
So then, why wouldn't we insert the word "medical" between "commercial" and "cannabis" in, in the, in tent under B?
So, where, where did you, where did you get that they said we're only doing medical?
My understanding is that, from the board, is that the, that the direction all along has been, we, they've only been, anything that's happening, that's already been happening, could only have been medical. It's only after Mel Kursa was adopted that non-medical marijuana became legal in California, and the direction from the board to initially regulate came before it was legal to do adult use.
But I believe that the voters, under Measure C, voted on medicinal and recreational. They didn't vote on just medicinal.
So, I mean, you got, whatever, none of it...
Well, Measure C...
Whatever you guys, whatever policy you want.
Measure C was meant to tax whatever the county was going to be doing, and it, it provided for taxes on, on, uh, testing facilities. It provided for testing, uh, or taxes on all cannabis activities.
So, is there...
It's up to the, it's up to the ordinance to say what's possible. Measure C will tax whatever we come up with.
Right. So, when, are you going to specifically state in here that we are only going to allow people in our county to get in medical licenses? They're not going to be, their commercial license is restricted to medical growing, so they cannot grow their product and go to a dispensary and sell it in a dispensary that crosses over into medicinal and recreational?
If, I mean, again, this is a policy choice, which is up to you and to the board about whether or not to allow any commercial, non-medical use. If there's, the state has, is now allowing a dispensary to, so you could have a dispensary with two licenses, an M-type license and a C-type license. We can choose locally what we want to allow the dispensaries to have. Right now, the direction has been to only allow medical, but the cannabis that, so if, if the dispensary has a state license for both medical and commercial, then both medical and commercial cannabis can be sold there.
When you apply to the state to get your license, does it specifically state your license is a medicinal growing license only?
Yes.
It does?
It does.
That's one of the alternatives.
So, where in this ordinance does it state we're only going to issue medical licenses?
Um, well...
When it, when it gets to the commercial growth, like...
Exceptions under seventeen nine five oh five oh, outdoor and mixed light, commercial, medical cannabis cultivation registered under the ordinance, the urgency ordinance. But if the, if the commission wants further clarification upfront, we can do that.
I think, I think it, obviously, it needs to be clear, and my assumption has always been that we are, uh, we're dealing with medical. Um, and, uh, and I think it would be a, a major shift at this point to be going into a non-medical.
So, seventeen nine five oh one oh says it's the purpose and intent of the chapter to eliminate any commercial cannabis in residential zones. So, I'm not sure whether that's the place to say we're only eliminating adult use.
No, it's when you get down to, and, but to also allow commercial cannabis cultivators. I think if we're going to do medical, we better right upfront say medical.
Okay. Sure.
And then, uh, down, and, and who ultimately receive a medical cannabis cultivation registration, et cetera. Um, I, I do think also, we need to point out in B, take into account, uh, those who are not already on qualified parcels, zoned A-one, AP, and GF, because that's really what we're talking about in B.
So, basically, what we're saying is that you can only grow if you have so many acres, so only the people that can afford to buy a bunch of property to grow, right? They have to have two hundred feet setbacks. Now, they have to grow only medicinal marijuana? How hard is it to get a medicinal card to buy? I don't think that that should matter, because anybody can get a card for medicinal marijuana. It's not that hard. You go in and you pay a couple hundred dollars, you see some doctor who writes you up, says you get headaches or whatever, and you get a card to buy medicinal marijuana. What's the point in that?
I guess with Prop sixty-four, I'm real confused why we're limiting this to medicinal. And how do you control whether it's medicinal or recreational when it leaves our county and goes for sale? What does, what is the, what is the tax implications on medicinal with Prop sixty-four versus recreational, and Prop sixty-four funds coming back into this county? I don't understand why, if, if you're going to regulate it, it's not going to be restricted to medicinal? That's just a joke.
I agree.
I mean, who's going to regulate that?
Well, I think that the draft that we sent to the board earlier was limited to medical, and I think that the dispensary draft that we sent to the board was limited to medical.
Agreed. The dispensaries was limited medicinal.
That's right, and, but I think that the draft, uh, regulatory ordinance that was sent to the board by this commission earlier was also limited to medical.
I know, I recall that. And I think I was...
That was my recollection of the direction of the board, that you want to limit it to medical.
Yeah.
And, and the, the, the track and trace program to be implemented by the state is what separates the, uh, use from the M licenses, uh, from the A license types, uh, for the adult use.
Okay.
I think really...
I think I want to poll the board, so we don't get stuck on this issue for three hours. I just want to bring it to an end. Do you want it to be medical only?
Correct.
Karen?
I don't think it matters.
Commissioner Rattelli? Okay. There's three votes, right?
There are three votes. I, I just wanted to say, I think we're just on, we've been doing medical all along. Whether it makes sense to do it or not, I don't know. I think the board is expecting us to come up with a medical ordinance. Politically, if we were to shift gears right now, uh, I think it's going to cause a whole lot of problems. So, I, I, I personally do not believe that it has to be medical, but I think that, that we can...
Okay.
Provide to the board the option that it can be, I, I think this is true, it could be easily shifted to, uh, non-medical, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Let's, I think the board ought to make that decision, so I think we should stick to medical now.
So, it's what?
Karen, be more clear on your vote, because are we two-two, or are we three-one?
I think it should be, if, if we're going to allow grows, we should allow them to grow.
I agree with you. So, what, what is my votes now?
Three to two.
You are medical only, you are...
Both.
Both. You are...
Still thinking about it, but, I mean, this is the first time I've heard of this issue, all right?
I know, I feel the same way. I don't know where I got lost in that.
I'm sorry, but it's a major, it's a major issue, and I, and frankly, in the back of my little brain, I've been thinking about it and wondering, what am I missing? Thank you, Commissioner Ladish, for bringing this up. I know, I wonder if the Board of Supervisors realizes this, the way it's been going.
Only time I recall discussing this is when it was dispensaries, and I said, if it's going to be here, it's going to be here, and we should tax it both recreationally and medicinally, and nobody agreed with me, so it went strictly with medicinal. That was the medicinal portion that I picked up on this, but I didn't recall having this discussion regarding this ordinance. Now, if the, the supervisors never gave us direction to work on regulation. They gave us direction to work on a ban. We chose to make a recommendation to them to work on regulation. That was our recommendation. They didn't even have to look at it. They didn't ask for that. They asked for a ban, so I have no idea where this conversation is coming from.
I have a question for, I have a question for the staff, and that is, uh, what's, what's, what are the EIR implications here? We have, the proposed ordinance was, as I recall, solely medical.
No, that's...
That's correct.
Okay. So, this would not fall under, it would not be covered by the EIR if we went both?
Well, it's not, it's not...
That plays a huge role.
I would, I would want to discuss with the consultants whether or not that, uh, there would be an increased impact if it were to be allowed for both. I don't think there were, there was a, a cap. It was an estimate of how much, given the, the limits of the urgency ordinance, and if those, or the, the ordinance that the board first gave us direction, you know, uh, in almost two years ago now, um, of what they wanted to see in an ordinance, um, and what the expectation was that within those constraints, how many future growers there might be, and I think we, we looked at there might be somewhere around, excuse me, a thousand to twelve hundred growers, um, and how that would be dispersed, you know, in the county and the impact associated with that. I think that if the ultimate regulations that are to be adopted had the same effect by, um, you know, by the limitations that are placed on it, by parcel size, by zoning, those kind of things, then, um, the EIR probably covers it, but I would want to make sure I check with our outside counsel and...
Okay. That was a good question.
So, I think that's an argument for saying, presenting the question to the board with that input, and, but we'll continue with it as if it's, uh...
I'm good with that. So, we, so we want...
As if it's medical.
Okay. So, we have a majority of the commission that would like to suggest the board consider going to adult use in addition to medical.
Correct. But we're not going to...
Consider without, without our taking a stance on it.
Okay.
Yeah, primarily making sure the board realizes...
Correct.
That these regulations are written for medical, but could be converted to, to the, uh, the Polidolpe's approach.
I, I have another issue under seventeen point ninety-five oh one oh B, which limits the, uh, allowable commercial cannabis cultivation to those cultivators who have timely applied for and who ultimately receive a cannabis cultivation registration under the May tenth, twenty sixteen version of this chapter. Um, at one point, the idea of limiting it in that way was tied to the idea of, um, not having a flood of applicants coming in, another influx. And this ties to the question of the cap, because if you have a cap of fifty grows, there's your limit. And in another sense, if you severely restrict the zones in which cultivation can take place, you also are limiting in that way. The problem I have with the limitation that's here is that, almost by definition, the people who qualified under the urgency ordinance were people who came in and grew before it was legal to do so, under the permitting zoning rules of this county and under state law. And so, the effect is to penalize the people who chose to wait until there actually was registration from being even able to apply, and to reward the people who jumped the gun. And that doesn't sit well with me.
Me either.
And so, I would simply delete that, and if we wanted to do some, some restriction in this, in this manner at all, all I would do is say those people who were rejected as to all of their parcels under the urgency ordinance should not be allowed to apply, because we have had some people who had more than one grow, and they were in compliance as to one or more grows, and out of compliance for some reason as to another one. Those people should not be disqualified.
Correct.
And so, that would be my suggestion there, just simply as a matter of good public policy and fairness, and I have no idea how many other people might choose to apply, but I don't think they should be limited or prohibited from doing so.
Along that line of thought, though, wouldn't it also be true that there are people who were rejected because they couldn't prove they had been growing before the May tenth deadline? And, so they are, they are the legal, but illegal.
Those are the ones who claim to have been growing before May tenth, and often cases presented photographic evidence that purported to show that, that was false.
Right.
Can I interrupt for just one second? We're getting a whole lot of squealing feedback up here through the speakers. Are you hearing it?
I'm hearing it, and I believe the issue is, uh, everybody's mind on the same time that...
I just wanted to ask if, if we go along with that, would you then be continuing to process the people who have applied under the urgency ordinance?
No, there would be no need to do that.
Okay.
I think, I think we...
Whoa.
We, we have to get this done today, and I think we reached a decision last time. I see your point, and, and I appreciate your point, as far as good public policy. But the people who we are talking about here, the ones that have complied with the urgency ordinance and, uh, are going to be determined, those that are, still have the applications pending, that, that they have complied with the urgency ordinance, I think, uh, that's our pool, and that's what we decided before as a fair approach. I really don't want to reinvent the wheel in every respect today. I want to get this done and off to the board, um, and so, I, I think we, we might hold this in reserve about the, how we phrase purpose and intent until we get down into the nitty-gritty actual ordinances as to who can apply and this sort of thing. Uh, this is supposed to be more of a generalized statement, um, and we could come back to it if we disagree, uh, at that point with what we've done before.
Well, the same language appears later on.
Yeah.
So, this is the first time it came, came up, so that's why I brought it up.
Yep. I, I, I'd like to stick with what we decided in September on that, on that issue.
I agree with Kelly. So, only the people who have previously applied can still, now continue to apply or continue to grow when the people who were, per se, law-abiding can't even apply anymore?
But let's look at this practically. We are asking the people who did apply, who would have, uh, the licenses, but happened to be on property that no longer is going to be deemed appropriate. For them to survive under this ordinance, they have to, uh, reclaim their, the property they've been on and move to another property, or seek rezoning, and et cetera. We have opened this up to people outside that haven't been a part of the process... If we have opened this up to people outside that haven't been a part of the process, they can just come right in and cherry pick and say, I like that property, I'm going to take that one and then apply.
That's right, if they have the money to do it, that's exactly what's going to happen and I don't see why...
I'm concerned about fairness, about fairness to the people who have been playing our game.
Fairness, I think if you want to consider it fairness, it should be fairness to everybody. Everybody who lives in Calaveras County, everybody who has property in Calaveras County. If they're not growing now because they weren't illegal before and now they have the property, they've got that property, they should be able to apply and grow on it if it falls under the ordinance rules. Just because they weren't growing before?
So you're looking at an expansion of cannabis growth?
Well technically, you still have the same amount, you're going to limit to so many people, so now it's going to be...
Well, we're going to decide whether we're limiting, I mean, if we're talking about limiting to 50 growers, why, this is all academic. As if we have to choose who can consider that. I personally do not think...
That is why I'm in favor of the ban, because you can't just pick, oh, you 50 people, we like you, why don't you get to grow?
No, I am, I mean, now where I'm looking at it.
Okay, I'm going to stop this conversation for a second.
I think you should.
Thank you. Okay. We are on 1795.010 and we are making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to acknowledge that this is strictly medical and if they want otherwise, they need to make a decision based on that. We are not adding the word "medical" at this point in time. We're going to let the Board of Supervisors make that decision. Is that correct?
No, I thought if it's going to be medical, we ought to say it's medical, that that's what we're presenting.
Okay, we got that from you. You're talking too much. So can we, can we take a vote and a poll on are we adding medical or not? That's what I need to get to because, and I thank you for bringing up the EIR portion. Go ahead.
I would add the word "medical."
Okay.
And you're talking about 1795.010B, correct?
Correct.
I agree the word "medical" should be in there.
Okay, one, two, three.
As long as we are telling the Board.
Okay, so then we have the second issue, which was, and I think it was a valid issue to bring up, was the word "limited." The way that Commissioner Wooster was discussing that. Do you have a proposal you specifically want to make to a change to this so we can pull the Board and move to the next section?
Yes, delete the phrase in B, "We have timely applied for and who ultimately receive a cannabis cultivation registration under the May 10th, 2016 version of this chapter."
That's a policy, instead of worrying about wording, look at the, what Commissioner Wooster is suggesting is that you consider the policy that he's recommending, which is to not limit potential applicants to those who succeed under the urgency ordinance process.
Okay, I just want to get some real good clarity on this. You are saying you want to open it up to anybody and everybody?
Yes.
You're not going to restrict it just to those that applied under the urgency ordinance?
Correct.
And I agree with him.
And you agree with him?
What happens to the cap? I think they're tied together.
Okay, then let's do this. At this time, let's move forward with just adding the word "medical." When we get to the cap and we get a vote on that, then we'll go back and readdress this and let's make a side note on that. Okay, so is there any issues with C?
Since I want to add a D, it just needs a little doctoring at the beginning.
I think that ties to the cap as well.
You know what, I think what we need to do is discuss the cap and go out of order here so that as we go through this with purposes and intents, we can make the appropriate changes. So if we were to go to the cap of 50, let's get that out of the way first. I would like to pull the Board and see who is in favor of the cap of 50.
I am not in favor of the cap of 50.
I'd like to know if it's constitutional.
I am not in favor of it. I don't even think we need an answer to that. If we've got three votes that are not in favor, we can keep moving. Because it doesn't feel constitutional to me either. Do I have a third vote?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Do you two want to go on the record with your vote or stay silent?
Well, for now, I'd say the cap of 50 is questionable. Its legality is questionable.
Okay, Commissioner Wooster?
I have some questions about whether it is workable or legal.
Okay.
But if we're going to have a regulation, I think we're going to have to have some limits on it and I don't know how else to do it.
Okay.
What we did before.
We can say here with this Commission that we are not in favor of the cap of 50 as a recommendation back to the Board. Now, what we had discussed at the September 29th, 30th, I think it was the 30th, was that those that applied under the urgency ordinance, and we have the numbers before us in the staff report, there are about 503 people left that qualify and that have not, there's still many of them that are in the works and pending, potentially 503. We don't know what that end number could look like. It could be 350 or 400 people. As we've discussed the legalities of it in the last hearings, those that applied, we could put a stop to it right then and there. These are the ones that applied, these are the ones that are accepted, and that is how we voted on the 30th, that we were going to stick with those that got through the urgency ordinance and received their registration through the county.
With that specific provision that the Planning Department would continue to process the applications and only the people who satisfied the requirements would be a part of that?
Correct. So right now, we're looking at 503 people until all of those pending registrations are completed, which there will probably be some that either drop out, don't want to participate, or those that don't qualify. We know that number's going to shrink. And I know I've heard the two of you express that you want to open it up to anybody and everybody that wants to jump in. I kind of feel that the people that applied through the urgency ordinance, if we are going to restrict the zones and they either have to move or they have to rezone their property, apply for a rezone, I feel that they deserve an opportunity to do that first before opening it up to other registrations. I'm not interested in opening it up to any more registrations in this county. I'm just not. I think that when we get down to a final number with what those that came through the urgency ordinance, they paid the fees, they did it right, they complied, they deserve that opportunity to complete the process that we're changing.
And it's a natural cap.
And it's a natural cap. It's not going to get us into a legal mumbo jumbo mess. She has no opinion. We don't want to know. So I guess my question is, do you want to change what we decided on the 30th? That we're going to cap it with the urgency ordinance applications or do you want to open it up to further? Remember, we have a sunset of five years on this. So those that are in, if things go well in that five-year period, at that point in time, they're going to be relooking at this and decide if they want to open it up to further or it didn't work out for us and it's just automatically going to sunset and go away. So I am for keeping it to the urgency ordinance applications.
So am I.
Commissioner Bocelli?
Yes.
Commissioner Sisk? Commissioner Wooster?
No, but you've got three votes.
Okay, so we are going to keep it under the urgency ordinance and not open it up to further...
Can I make a quick comment?
Absolutely.
It seems to me that our approach might be to specify that what we're now doing is in fact a revision to the urgency ordinance. It's a continuation of it. It's, we're not making a new regulation. That way, from a constitutional argument...
Technically we are.
We have to.
And while the, some of the rules that currently apply under the urgency ordinance will certainly be carried over into this new ordinance, the urgency ordinance expires by operation of law in February and we can't continue it. So it is a new 1795. The reality is that, based on the conversation you've just had, is that it is a sort of a continued process for those growers who qualified under that ordinance to continue to grow with new standards and regulations. But technically, it is a new ordinance and we have to go through this exercise.
It's a documented process. It'll be incorporated by reference into a brand-new ordinance to allow the continued processing because there wasn't any rhyme or reason to the people who got, who were vetted and the people who weren't. It was just about what we're planning, the Planning Department was in the process, so...
I'm just thinking of lawsuits.
Well, I think when you get to lawsuits, it's better, this is a new ordinance where we're referring back for certain circumstances to the urgency ordinance. Because otherwise, if you, I think you get, if we were amending the urgency ordinance and all of a sudden changing all the zoning and setback requirements and this sort of thing, I think we'd be in much thicker soup than we are with a new ordinance.
Okay, so I'm going to move this forward. At this point in time, we are doing 0 to 50 and we are going to set it to the urgency ordinance applications that have applied and that is going to be the limitation that is going to be set into the purpose and intent.
Correct.
Does that satisfy the language that you were looking for?
It may not, but I'll go with that approach.
Well, Commissioner Wooster's the one that wanted to change, so I want to make, you want my mic on?
I want to make sure that the Commissioner...
It's already been, you've already polled the Commission and three to two. You're going to limit it to those who applied for and were accepted under the urgency ordinance or who become accepted afterwards.
We will take care of the wording, I think the poll was to keep the policy as is. Unless you feel that the wording in the ordinance does not fit the policy that you just polled on, I would just move on to the next policy.
The only thing I would suggest is that you add reference to the people who are not already, excuse me, that the people you're referring to in B are people who are not already on qualified parcels under A1, AP and GF, just for clarification.
I'm not sure what you're...
I don't understand that.
I don't understand either.
Well, okay, I think we're getting too much into detail in the purpose of intent section and those provisions are clearly contained within the body of the ordinance itself.
Then I'd like to suggest that there be a new paragraph D in our intent with a comment that I have at the bottom of the page on my papers. And this is in principle stating in effect, is also the purpose and intent of this chapter to enable enforcement of the ban of illegal cannabis activities by providing enough legal and closely regulated commercial medical cannabis cultivation in the county to generate sufficient taxes under, then I cite it, but Major C.
How do you know what's sufficient?
This is our intent. We don't know that anything in this intent is going to actually be done. I just think we ought to be upfront and say, this is one of the major purposes of this ordinance. It's to raise enough taxes under Major C to go after the bad guys. If you want to put it in those terms, that'd be fine too.
Okay, polling the Commission. Do you want to add it? Do you want to address it?
I do not want to add it.
I do. I agree with it 100% because that is in fact what we're doing.
I do.
Can I get legal counsel's opinion on this, please?
I think, I don't think there's any harm in adding it, except that I wouldn't strike our existing D. I would add it as an A.
I just assumed that it, that's fine. How many angels are in this pen? It looked like your D seemed to be a wrap-up sort of thing.
Okay, then I'm fine with that and we can make the DE?
We would make DE.
Got it. Okay. Look, we finished a page.
We've done a lot, actually.
Okay, so moving on to 17.95.020 in definitions. Any issues anybody want to address on page three?
No.
We do it by section number? Nope.
Okay, so moving past page three, page four. Whoops.
Excuse me, I don't understand C. What's missing there?
You don't understand what?
C.
We don't have definitions.
There are some definitions we're still working on. As we went through the ordinance, we realized there were terms that we used. We need to make sure they were clearly defined. But in order to get this out to you for enough time to look at the bulk of it, we're still going to be adding those definitions. So those where they're highlighted in red and they're not complete, we're still working on those.
I'm going to ask that the audience please refrain from doing a lot of talking because it's really causing interference up here. Thank you. So, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it was in blacks and supposed to be in red, so this great color code didn't work on that one.
It just doesn't work for that section.
Okay, so, moving through page four, any suggested changes?
Yes, on O, it is important that we add the rest of cultivation site definition that's contained in the state. So it needs to be, we need to add to that or where any combination of those activities occur. Without that, why a cultivation site? Any of the things that are listed by staff by itself is a cultivation site. So I think it's important we have the combination.
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, just finish up with the definition from Business and Professions Code 2600.
Oh, okay.
They have, comma, or where any combination of those activities occurs and that makes it make more sense. Okay.
Okay, everybody's good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So going on to page five.
I know we're not supposed to worry about typos, but there is one. In SS, the reference to 17.95.020N isn't right. It should be S instead of N.
Okay. Okay. And hold on one second because I need to read my notes. Okay, one of the issues that was brought to my attention was II. And when they're talking about parcel means any parcel of rural property that may be separately sold in compliance with the Subdivision MAP Act. Their concern was under ag preserves, that there are several parcels that are encompassed into an ag preserve and they cannot be sold off separately and should that be referenced?
Well, I think we have, we have a separate section based on Supervisor Toffinelli's direction that only one cultivation permit be allowed per contract. And so I think that addresses that issue. I understand that there are, I mean, we're identifying parcel in the general nature here. What is a parcel of land? And it's a legal parcel under the MAP Act.
Okay.
And there are other restrictions that would prohibit the sale of a portion of a Williams Act that is unrelated to this ordinance.
070D14 has the Williamson Act.
But even under the Williams Act itself and our local ordinance is regulating that, they can't dispose of portions of that without amending the contract and going through a lengthy process.
And is that what that D14 is intended to take care of? We'll wait until we get there.
We'll wait until we get there. Okay, so the next item is going to be going to page 61795030 unless anybody has any other issues with the meanings and terms. Are we good with moving on to that page? Okay. I know that the sheriff has just arrived and that he had some things that he wanted to speak to us about as well. Would you like to hear from him now before we get into other issues that may affect what he has to say?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right, Sheriff DeVassilio?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are we folks doing today?
You missed the first half. We're doing okay.
Well, they don't have it on, I can't see it on my computer and I was in the meeting, so apologize. I sent all the Board members, a Commissioner, excuse me, an email yesterday that had some recommendations that we had put out and some... recommendations that we had put out, and some concerns that I had. I know I've talked to Ms. Moss, and because of the holidays and stuff, there was a lot of stuff that I would have liked to seen in the ordinance, but they just didn't have time. I mean, it's just, this whole process is such an evolving, revolving door with the way the state's doing things, they keep changing things on us, too, so. I will go to the, the proposed ordinance that the staff put together, and on-
Is this the same chart you sent me with no changes?
Uh, no, I, I sent that to the planning commission, this one here, the one that we had talked about originally.
Okay, so no changes to it since the time you sent it to me?
No, not on this, no.
Okay, thank you.
But in, inside the, the ordinance, if you go to page, well, I don't know what your pages are, but it's under 1795060.
Page 11?
Well, that's where it starts. Page 12, actually, it's subsection two. It's actually on page 12, if it were on the same. Seems like every time I print something up, it's different than what you folks have.
No, I'm good with what you have.
Okay. Subsection two, the, that's highlighted in brown for staff. If you read Business and Professions Codes 26057, it's very limiting on my abilities to deny folks. It goes back to what the penal code talks about, and what was talked about originally in the urgency ordinance as far as serious felonies. The problem are, and Barbara Yook spoke to this, too, during the urgency ordinance process, that there are serious misdemeanors that should, where people should not be allowed to, to be part of this process, and this Business and Professions Code section does not address any of those issues.
But it does have, the draft, the staff provided, or other relevant factors, and I would, I, I thought that that would be, that that would take into account anything that you thought would be relevant.
Okay, and that's fine, I just, I just want to make sure that we're-
I just, I wanted to make sure that you were okay with that.
Yeah, and I'm fine, as long as I, it doesn't pull that away from me, that was my concern. And then, if you go down, probably about three quarters of the way, that paragraph says, in the event of incompatible finding, the sheriff shall provide the criminal history information that resulted in the findings to the subject of the background check and to the planning director. No, cannot do that by law. I can't do that. I can submit it to county council, and then she can relay that information to you, but by law, I can't disclose that information to anybody.
So, I, I was hoping that I would be able to work with Natalie and your office on a waiver process.
That's not up to us, that's up to the state, you're gonna have to talk to the state about that.
Okay, we had a process for doing, for doing some discussion during a waiver by the actual applicant during the planning commission hearings, and maybe we can come up with something, you know, that, that, I understand your concern in this, but we can, it's hard for them to, to work with it if they can't see what they-
And I understand that, but these folks that have these criminal backgrounds, they know what they've done. They know what they've done. If they, especially if it's a, it's a crime that they've been convicted of. I, I'm sorry, but in my profession, I hear, I don't remember, these aren't my pants, don't know how those drugs got in my pants. I hear that all the time, so, I'm sorry.
So, if we were to add something that said, to the extent allowed by state law, would that cover your concern? Because then, wait, we can't go outside of state law.
I can't make that decision, that's something you're gonna have to talk to DOJ about, and you've got to remember that because of the language we've put in this, it's going to allow me to get the information from the federal DOJ also, there's another problem, and I don't think the feds are gonna allow that. Again, that's something for county council to research, I, all I know is what they tell me, and it's like, we cannot disseminate that information other than to county council.
Okay, so, given that it would be going potentially to me, if we just, if I put, in the event of an incompatible finding, the sheriff shall, to the extent allowed by law, provide the criminal history?
That I'm good with, absolutely.
That's, good.
And then if you go, I'm just gonna jump over to 1795070, it's actually on page 15, and this is-
14 for the public.
Subsection, subsection two, it says, a private residence, and this is throughout the, the ordinance in multiple places, a private residence for purpose of this chapter must be a dwelling as defined in chapter, in this chapter, or an individual unit of a multi-dwelling, or a temporary dwelling as provided in chapter 1793 of the county code for disaster victims. And this relates back to the Butte Fire. The Butte Fire was over two years ago, the urgency ordinance was set up then that they had two years. We, two years is up, they're done. In my, in the sheriff's office's opinion, they've had their two years to either rebuild their houses, they've had two, possibly three grow seasons going on, they should have been able to recoup their money and rebuild their houses. The problem that we're finding is that a lot of the folks that have purchased the burned areas are not the people, they are not the victims of the Butte Fire, but they're utilizing that process, and they shouldn't be able to do that. We have people down in the Coppropolis area that are not in the burn area, obviously, the, the urgency ordinance was a mile around the burn area, that are still trying to fall underneath that guideline. We need to get that gone.
I have a question on the sheriff. Whereas the urgency ordinance specifically referred to the Butte Fire-
Correct.
-on this, I, I understood this, the intent here is, if there is an existing emergency that has been declared by the Board of Supervisors, then, and there are replacement housing in those, then this provision would apply. That, that, this isn't trying to apply it to something that's already expired. If the Butte Fire designations have expired, these, this wouldn't apply, and I, my-
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be very clear, because the way I'm reading this, the way my staff is reading this, is that it reads that, it reads in our minds Butte Fire, because that's what's on our mind.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be specified a little bit clearer, because I don't want somebody come in and say, hey, I'm a victim of the Butte Fire, it's been four years.
So maybe if we had something as, as declared, as currently declared by the Board of Supervisors, and as provided in such and such?
Absolutely.
What about paragraph four, right below it, the language there? Does that satisfy you? Or would it satisfy you? Temporary replacement housing as provided in 1793 for disaster victims.
No, that's, that's the problem, yeah.
So, there are two things, one, it's absolutely true that the two years has expired, and anyone that had a temporary dwelling for the Butte Fire, that needs to be gone now, and so, and, and we also amended that ordinance when it was adopted on a permanent basis to ensure that only those people who actually lost their homes could benefit from that provision, that someone can't come in and buy a piece of burned property and plop down a temporary mobile home. That was a flaw in the original ordinance that we had overlooked, and so that's been corrected. So, the, the point of this, as Mr. Lattes points out, was that if, heaven forbid, there is a future disaster, and someone, you know, lost their home, but they could continue to cultivate by having a temporary residence there on the property.
I think I could add clarifying language to satisfy the sheriff that we're only talking about new disasters, not the old Butte Fire. So if we can just be directed to add clarifying language, I think that would be.
That's fine, I just, I just want to make sure that the county is, is covered, because it draws, we end up drawing the complaints, that, that's all. That was my concern, so thank you.
Sure.
And then, I gotta go, and county council, correct me if I'm wrong, paragraph three, right below, back on page 12, number three, says, the planning director shall, employing a differential standard, review the sheriff's criminal history report prior determining whether to-
I'm sorry, Sheriff Di Basilio, can you be more specific? Oh, okay, so it's-
Page 12.
The planning, I got it, okay, thank you, C3.
C3, I'm sorry, I didn't see the C, my paper was over. The planning director, where'd I go? Shall employing a differential standard to review the sheriff's criminal history report prior to determining whether to deny a registration under this chapter, or whether to, to condition registration on certain individuals not participating in onsite cultivation activity. Could you clarify that with?
So, based on some of our discussions that we had, I know that the sheriff had expressed a concern about individual, wanted employer, employees, not just the actual applicant, but employees.
Correct.
So we, we've written that in, so that the, anybody who will be working on the cultivation site would be subject to a background check. And so, I presume that if it's not the actual applicant, but just an employee who doesn't pass the background check, that the, a solution would be that that employee's not allowed to work there, you don't necessarily have to deny the application.
Correct, yeah, right.
Okay, so the, so the, the way this is written is, the sheriff, and it's the same for the, we wrote it the same for the environmental management agency, because they also have their own areas of expertise. If there is a disqualifying, or something that the, that the environmental management agency or the sheriff considers to be a disqualifying factor, in your case, it would be the criminal history results, or environmental management, some sort of toxin in the soil or water, then you would write a, some sort of report recommending denial based, and explaining, based on your knowledge, the rationale. The planning director will make the final decision, but is required to defer as far as your expertise, unless there is something that is, that is outstanding, or indefensible, or what have you, you have to employ, can't, and substitute his own judgment for the sheriffs or the environmental management agency when it comes to, let's say, what the criminal report says, or what the toxic report says.
Okay, the issue that I have with that is, nothing against Mr. Maurer, but if I tell you, or if I say that somebody should be denied, and I have documentation as to why, I don't understand how he should be able to overrule my ruling and/or environmental health, or anybody else. This should be set up like a clearinghouse, like we have for a lot of business licenses, and we talked about this before, that any entity that is involved in this, through this process, should have the ability to deny, providing we have legal justification. Again, it's not because the guy's hair is blue, we're not gonna let him have a marijuana grow. If we have documented reasons why, I don't understand why one person should be able to overrule our decision.
This is something we'd definitely be discussing later, sheriff, and I, I think, you know, we could take your views seriously under, under consideration, or unless the chair wanted to do it, we could discuss it right now, but it, it, it is a matter for our discussion, which we understand.
All right. That's all I have in this section. What I'd like to talk about is a little bit of the, some of the regulations that the state is imposing upon everybody, and see if we can't incorporate some of those. Again, I sent that packet to you, I didn't print it out because it's 115 pages.
Oh, that one.
That one, yeah. I highlighted the, the code sections that I was interested in discussing with you. I'll go through them real quick, I will give the code sections, so that folks in the audience, if they want to look it up, they can.
So, for, for the audience, and just for clarity on November 16th, the governor signed a new emergency declaration, and for those of you that haven't seen it, it is on the state's cannabis website page, so that's what he's gonna be referencing. If you want to look it up later, you can write down the code numbers.
And this, as I understand it, this is, these are emergent, proposed emergency regulations?
Yes, they are.
By three different state agencies?
Correct.
Do you, do you, do you know when they are proposed to come into effect? I, I couldn't see that.
You know what, I'm not gonna even go there right now, let's just keep moving.
We're still, I'll tell you this, we're still getting-
They are in effect.
We're still getting emails for public comments and stuff on them.
The, the comment period ends on Monday.
Yeah, it's right around the corner. And for the folks in the audience, it's called Bureau of Cannabis Control Proposed Text of Regulations, and it's categorized in the 5,000 number distinction, because there's two, there's one at 5,000, and there's one at 8,000. This is the newest one on them, it's 5,000, this is law.
Sorry, I stand corrected, I thought they were in effect, I guess they're not in effect yet.
They're not. Nothing comes in effect till after January 1, and that's why they keep changing things on us. Owners, the designation of owners is underneath 5,003. Some of this doesn't pertain, because it's for the state, but we need to make sure that the owner of the, of the, the owner of the property is identified, and the owner of the, or the registrant is identified, that there is a physical address, and I know it's gonna put a burden on the county, because we have a lot of parcels in this county that have no physical address, they're APN numbers, that needs to change, we need to have a physical address. It does a couple of things, one, it gives us the ability to locate the property more easily, and then if we have to write a search warrant, we need a, it works better for the judge if we have a physical address, as opposed to an APN number. I know the APN is part of the, the county's designation of the property, but it, it sometimes can't, sometimes can be problematic.
And, and, and we will have a physical address for every site, because every site that, that would be permitted must have a residence on it, and we will be issuing an address with the building permit for that residence, if there was, isn't one already.
And then the other thing that, what the state says is subsection one here says, a person with an aggregate ownership interest of 20% or more in the person applying for the license or licensee, unless the interested, the interest is solely a security lien or encumbrance. The problem with the security lien or encumbrance is that lets the straw man come in, and that's where we have the problems, that you have this silent partner who says he's a silent partner, but he's actually not. He is the kingpin that is saying, here, Billy Bob, you go grow over here, and then I'm gonna get all the profits, so that I'm not associated to it. And they avoid the background checks, they avoid a lot of processes and that. We would like to see that anybody who is a registrant of the marijuana grow, or has any portion thereof, be able to be background checked.
So, as I understand it, that regulation that you're talking about now, the state regulation, is applying to state licenses?
Correct.
And, and you don't see it, and we'd have to ask county council if there's any binding effect of that on what we do.
I, I think we have, we can be stricter in background check requirements in terms of the feasibility of what's being requested, I would need a little bit more time to research if there's any issue with that, but I don't, I mean, to the extent it's legal to request background checks of anybody with any, the problem with any, with any ownership interest is you can have somebody, in Germany, you can have somebody, you know, you, there's, a business can have endless numbers of people with small financial interests, and it might not be feasible to actually do that, so the state shows a cutoff at 20%. I understand that there's, based on how the state did it, I understand that there's always a possibility that somebody will slip in, I'm not sure if from a resource or perspective it's possible to make this so airtight that nobody would slip in.
Is there a way we can allow, if it's all of a sudden it's 100 background checks required for one grow, is there a way we can put discretion on either the, the planning director or the sheriff, and your limited resources, as to-
I don't think we can pick and choose on, if it's a person-by-person basis, who gets background checked without having problems.
Because I can see the sheriff's concern, you might have three people who have 19% ownership, but they really are, have common interests.
Exactly what they do.
Yes.
The bad guys will do that.
Right, I mean, it's, that's the thing, I don't think there's a way of allowing cultivation without there being a risk that somebody is going to slip in.
I'm not suggesting that we're gonna catch every single one of them, I mean, that's why I'm still employed. It's just not, and it's unrealistic to believe that. I just would like to see if there's a way that we can try to tighten it up as best we can, that's all I'm asking. I, I understand that there's always gonna be a loophole, that's why bad guys are bad guys, they find those loopholes and they utilize them, so. They find those loopholes, and they utilize them, so. Section 5028, it talks about subletting the premises. A licensee shall not sublet any portion of the licensed premises. So, basically, if, if they have a grow, and I think Peter and, and Ms. Moss have already resolved that problem, it's one grow per site. I just want to make sure that we don't have people subletting half of their half acre grow to somebody else.
So, there's already, the way the state has set it up, each license issued by the state is specific to a defined premises. And so, they would not be able to sublet under their state laws?
Through the state license.
Through the state, so that, I think that concern is actually covered by state license.
And also, I think our, our permit process will be limited to site and individual. It's, it's tied to both, so I don't think a sublet would be possible under, under this scheme.
As is the state license, actually tied to both the site and the individual.
Well, like I said, that's from the state, it says that, so I.
I'm, I'm unclear as to whether you're saying that, under the new state procedures, with people having state licenses, there would, there could not be multiple grows on the same parcel?
There can be, so, the state has, instead of defining premises as a legal parcel, they, the state license says that you have to pick what, if, if it's, if it's multiple, there can be multiple premises on a parcel, but there can't be multiple licensees on a premises. The portion of the parcel used by a licensee can only be used by that licensee.
And this is a question I have for you, Sheriff, and that is, is it easier, or would it be easier to enforce cultivation regulations if all, if, if we allowed multiple grows on one large parcel, as long as the setbacks and there are separations, so you can keep track of whose, whose grow is which? Would it be easier for you to enforce if we did allow multiple grows?
Staff and I actually talked to that, and yes, it would be. Because you're, if you have, if you have 100 acre grow, and you have 10 grows on one site, they're all there, you would expect, and I know Supervisor Toffinelli's concern was, when I had a conversation with him, was that they're going to steal from each other. Realistically, I don't see these folks that are going to spend this kind of investment, that are going to work together, because it's going to behoove them to have sec, security for all of their systems, you know, all their, their product. Bottom line is, no. I think it would be better if we had, if they were going to do it, they had multiple sites, or multiple
Grows.
Grows on a single site, provided the site have.
Environmentally, though, and water wise, that's not, that's a big drawdown on one specific spot for me. I don't like that.
And it could be.
That's for us to talk about.
It could be, and there's, there's a whole lot to that. And we'll get in, I'll go to it right now, and it's not part of this, but I know that Supervisor Toffinelli wanted all plants grown in pots. Well, the problem with that for us is that those are portable. The water and pesticides and whatnot still drain through those pots, because we're out there cleaning this stuff up, and that product, the water and everything, still draining down onto the ground. If they're in the ground, and I'm not saying they should be in the ground, or they should be in pots, but I think to put everything in pots only causes us more issues, because now they're going to move these plants around a little easier.
If the pots didn't have bottoms, would that take part of your, take part of your concerns?
Well.
Harder to move.
It would be harder to move, this is true, as it is when they're in the ground. So, again, back to an environmental thing, and that's, that is not my wheelhouse whatsoever. So, I will leave that headache to you folks. Section 5036, Notification of Theft, Loss, and Criminal Activity. State says that they shall notify local law enforcement within 24 hours. I want to make sure that that's in our ordinance. I have numerous citizens calling and complaining, saying, "Hey, did you know that this guy got ripped off?" And it's like, "No," because they're not telling us. I think that if they're going to be part of this process, they need to let us know what's going on. And a lot of that will come to light, as I get further into this, as to why it's important that they let us know what's going on.
So, we have sections throughout that say, "You have to comply with all laws and regulations." Is that adequate, or do you want to?
No, because if, if, if somebody comes and steals my car, I don't by law have to tell them they stole my car.
But the state, if the state law and the state regs that you're citing from actually require that, do we actually need to repeat what's stated there? We already require them to comply with all state laws and regs?
I'm into CYA.
Oh, okay.
Cover your ass. It is in the state law, and if they decide, but get, remember, this, just because it's in state law, doesn't mean that these folks are going to go get a state license. They don't have to get a state license, do they?
They do.
Do they?
They do.
In order to sell it?
They, they have, they cannot, nobody can grow on, on any premises without having a state license that is specific, not only to the person, but to that site. And if they move, they have to change their license and get approved for the new site that's specific to that site.
Through the state.
Yes, the site, the state licensure process includes, they, they have to provide a detailed site description with extreme amount of detail.
Correct. I understand that. I just, I just want to, I just want to make sure that we are covered. That, that's my concern. Because again, a lot of these folks that, and let me rephrase that for the folks in the audience, the illegal growers aren't going to call me. I already know that. The few legal registered growers that have called, that have been ripped off, have called. I'm still hearing that there are some that are not. I don't know, because they're not calling. So, if they, you're right, it is their problem, but it causes problems for the sheriff's office, because we have, we get the complaints, and we have to deal with the complaints. It's that old saying, "No victim, no crime." Again, if I don't report my car got stolen, my car never got stolen. So, I'm not a victim at that point, because I haven't reported it. But the problem with that is that is allowing the bad guys to continue to do this, and we're not able to try and track them down.
What, one problem we could have, as long as, as long as that is, that the state law requires these people to report to you, as well as anybody else that the state law might require, we have the problem, if we write this into our ordinance, in, in, to be completely consistent with the state, then the state's going to change its ordinance. So, it's easier for us, if it, if it provides the requirement that you want, that we have this general reference to comply with all state laws, and that doesn't mean that your office, or the planning department, can't come up with this whole list of, "Here are things that are required by state law, and you better do them."
Yeah, I, I agree.
Well, that's a good argument for putting it in the county ordinance, because the state might change their mind, and then the sheriff doesn't have the ability to do what he needs to do.
But if we're inconsistent.
So, I agree that it should be in the ordinance.
If we're then inconsistent with whatever the states come up with, in a way that conflicts with, then we have a problem.
But like Julie said, we can make it more stringent, we can supposedly be more relaxed. So, if for some reason they change that, then I still have the ability to.
Correct. What is the reg for that?
It says 5063, and what it, it says, "As a licensee shall notify the bureau," and the bureau is the state, "and local law enforcement within 24 hours of discovery of any of the following situations."
Okay.
A discrepancy, theft, loss, there's, there's a, there's an array of things.
Sheriff, you had said 5036 earlier, is it 63 or 36?
5036, I'm sorry if I transposed those. I don't have my glasses on.
That's okay. We're all getting older.
Hey, hey, I am not. Maybe getting older, but I refuse to grow up, right?
There you go.
If you go to, and I'm going to kind of skip a little bit here, 5043, it says licensee employee badge requirements. What this is, and I'll read it to you, it's very short, it says, "All agents, officers, or other persons acting for or employed by a licensee shall display a laminated or plastic-coated identification badge issued by the licensee, or, yeah, issued to the licensee at all times while engaging in commercial cannabis activity. The identification badge shall, at a minimum, include the licensee's doing business as, the name and license number, the employee's first name, and employee number exclusively assigned to that employee for identification purposes, and a colored photograph of the employee that clearly shows the full front of the employee's face, and that is at least one inch in width and one and a half inches in height." When we first started this program, the urgency ordinance, I had gone to Colorado, and this was one of the things that they do. And it works great, because no matter, they also do them for vendors. There's another section there, talks about vendors. If they have electrical contractors coming in, or plumbers, or whoever, anybody that is going to be going on to that site, gets a background check, the sheriff's office assigns them this ID badge, and it allows us to know that when we're on site, who we're dealing with. Plain and simple. It just lets us know who we're dealing with. What it helps us do is that it, it makes it so that the employer cannot just hire Joe Blow, who has never had a background check, and we don't know who he is or where he's from. If we have homicide, or robberies, or something like that in the area, we have an idea of who is in the area.
So, if they have, this would be issued by the state, I assume, that's?
These are, the way I'm reading this, and you'll have to read it for yourself, it says, "All agents, officers, or other persons act," this is saying that the licensee shall wear them, and that the licensee is requiring, is the required party to issue them. I would rather see the sheriff's office issue these for our folks.
I'm proposing that later, so.
Okay. And then, if you go back up to 5042, excuse me, it says, "Licency shall assure that any person on the licensed premises, premise, except for employees and contractors of the licensee, are escorted at all times by the licensee, or at least one employee of the licensee, when in the limited access areas of the premises." I think they're talking about, you know, indoor grows at that point, because they have limited access for whatever they're doing inside of their indoor grows. But this is still something that I'd like to see for outdoor grows. Again, if they have somebody coming in to do some electrical work for them, we need to know who's on the site.
So, I, I would need to research some of these things to make sure that they're legal.
Well, they got to be legal, if the state's doing them.
But if you're going beyond, and say, for example, if you have the sheriff issuing instead of the employer, if it says the employer can issue them, the employer can still issue them, you can add a different layer where there's a separate ID issued by the sheriff. So, there's some details that are going to need to be worked out, so, okay.
All right. And then, 5044 is pretty lengthy, and what it talks about is video surveillance systems, storage of the video surveillance, the timeframes that they have to keep the video surveillance.
Is that part of the track and trace? Or is that just a new requirement?
No, that's security. That's a new requirement for security.
Okay.
5, or, excuse me, 5312, talks about required transport vehicle information, if they're going to be transporting their product out of the county. We need, and I asked about this during the urgency ordinance, we need to know what vehicles that they're transporting in. It, it solves a lot of problems for us in the long run. If we know that, you know, our, our officer pulls up behind a vehicle and runs a license plate, and it comes, excuse me, it comes back to a grow person, or whoever it comes back to, but there's something in our system that says that they're a registered grower, it may save the person transporting some headaches, because we know that they're a registered grower, and they're, they're, they're legal. If we stop them because somebody says something, we already know who we're dealing with. It's a safety issue. State's requiring it, I, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to require that they let us know. And they, and, and again, this is quite a lengthy requirement, they have to show, they have to be at least 21 years of age, they have to be carrying a shipping manifest, and they have to show proof of insurance and registration for the vehicle, and/or trailer that they're towing.
So, it's to be similar to, if they have an extra wide load, they have to contact the state and let them know that they're traveling through there, right?
Get a permit.
Get a permit, okay.
So, the, the sections are 5312, 5313, and 5314. That covers the transportation and the shipping manifest.
Okay.
And Sheriff, are you saying, or suggesting that we change it to, instead of the bureau, this is 5312A, it talks about?
Sending it to the bureau. See, that's the problem. The state's going to have that information, we're not.
So, you want us to have this, to say, reported to the sheriff's office?
Also, just so you're, you know, there's a mandatory, they have to let you into their track and trace database. The database is the state sets up. There is actually something in Melcurse saying, if local law enforcement requests access to the database, they get it. So, you have access to the state's information already, just to let you know.
Okay. I'd still like to see it in our, in our ordinance. I think that's, at this point, all I have right now. I know staff and I are still working on a lot of the issues. This pretty much pertains strictly to the sheriff's office. There are, there's some cultivation plan requirements, but I know Mr. Maurer is all over that, in making sure that the site plans and everything are done correctly. So, at this point, that's really all I have, that I can think of.
Okay.
Unless you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Comments or concerns?
No, but we sure appreciate you showing up.
Yes, thank you so much. We appreciate you taking the time to come here.
Yeah. I've got a meeting this afternoon at 2:00. I'll be at my office. If you need me to come back, or you need Captain Macedo to come down, don't hesitate, give us a call, and one of us will shoot back down.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on that note, before we take off, why don't we take a 10-minute break, and then we'll pick up where we left off? Susan? You got, okay, thank you. And those are safe for you?
Oh, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, so, we're going to pick back up on, and I don't even know where I was, 1795030. Okay. We'll pick up there. And I would like to go through and see if any of the commissioners have any notes based on that.
I do, on, on subsection C, 17.95030C.
Can I go to page 1?
We're at page 6.
Thank you.
Or, if you're looking at my stuff, you're on page 7. Okay. On that, why, C provides that all the remediation would be done within 12 months. We set 24 months before, depending on the site. Sometimes the remediation might take two weeks, but others, getting grading permits, et cetera, et cetera, I think it'd be very hard for them to do within 12 months. So, I would go back to our 24 months, or allow discretion with the Planning Director to, to extend the time.
So, these are the ones that would be for those who are proposing to relocate.
Or rezone.
And, or rezone. Well, if it's rezone, they wouldn't have to remediate, because they'd be, continue to use that same site. And after discussion with Supervisor Toffinelli, we felt that 12-month timeframe, we still have the 24 months for those who would be abandoning, or no, no longer producing. But, but for those in order to, they would have to have that done before we could issue the permit, and just in a two-year process, to issue a new permit, just made it, you know, so that, that's why it was shortened.
Well, and I, I have a suggestion that, that there be some way of issuing a conditional permit, that, and I think this is, I propose this later on, the, that there be a way that during this remediation, if it was going to take 24 months, that there be a, a conditional new permit issued while they're carrying out the remediation, and perhaps secured by a bond, that they are going to indeed.
So, so, I, Julie just pointed out to me that this was, this does apply to, to everyone, and, you know, it's really up to you. If you think 24 months is more appropriate, then I'll, you know.
24 months is too long.
We, we felt that 12 months was sufficient time to do the remediation that was necessary.
So, just for clarity purposes, if they have to acquire So just for clarity purposes, if they have to acquire new property, run an escrow, first they have to find it.
This is for everybody. This is the provision that says... This is the provision that says, there's a later provision that talks about the people who are moving. This provision is that everybody needs to come into compliance with the provisions of the ordinance within 12 months.
Well, that's the remediation provision.
Right.
This is 1795030C, right? That everybody, including those who are not moving, would need to come into full compliance with 12 months. That's what this says.
Well, why would we be letting people have 12 months to come into compliance? They should be in compliance now.
The remed, 90 days to come into compliance with the...
The cleanup, the remediation provisions.
90 days for the ordinance, and 12 months for the remediation. That's what, that, you had said 24 months for remediation, we had, you had said 90 days before to stop growing, because that's what we had said under the urgency ordinance.
That's not, I think that was misinterpreted, because the way that I took that was, it was followed under the urgency ordinance, 90 days, and then 90 days for remediation and cleanup. If they're moving their site, we talked about the 24-month timeframe. They would have to clean up before they could move, but we did not give 24 months for remediation and cleanup. We gave the 90 days off the urgency ordinance.
No, they would have to stop growing within 90 days, but there had been discussed, the planning commission had felt that remediation, because of permits and what have you, would take 24 months, and then now Mr. Maurer is suggesting that only 12 months would be required for remediation. That's, but again, that's, you'll have to discuss with each other.
Why would we give 12 months to remediate and clean up?
We didn't. We picked 24.
We gave them 24 before.
To move.
Not to remediate. Because we're thinking of the situations where there's monstrous things to be done.
That was not what my intent was. I apologize, but I...
On our tape, that's what we did. But let's go with what, I don't really care what we did, let's just do a reasonable thing. If it's 12 months, would you have a problem, Peter, if we gave you discretion to extend that period, under certain circumstances, under...
I don't recommend giving discretion on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Then I'd keep it at 24 months. I mean, it's their benefit to get this done as soon as possible.
This is if they're shutting down a site, right?
Yes.
This is shutting down, they have to shut, they have to stop their activity in 90 days. The cleanup to make it remediated to the full level of the mitigation that we're requiring, including getting permits, and carrying through any grading, and erosion control, et cetera. That was the piece in preparation of abandoning the site.
Okay, then I don't want to change this to 24. I want to leave it to 12.
I think the difficulty we had before was that some of these remedial actions were gonna require permits to get it done, and that might delay things. And I think that's why the 24-month period was chosen originally. And I don't have a good sense as to what it ought to be, quite frankly.
I just would hate to see somebody delay cleaning up an environmental mess, and not even start on it for six months or 12 months, because they know they have 24. I have, I see no excuse for waiting to start on cleanup.
I fully agree with that.
And a year gives you, if you're in the middle of winter, there are some conditions that are gonna stop you from completing the process. I understand that, so that's why I'm willing to give them the full 12 months. They have at least eight months out of the year that they can have good weather in, on certain weeks and days to get it done. That's more than enough time for me.
If those eight months are taken up in getting grading permits, then you're back into the winter. I don't think we should stall here for...
So are we good with 12 months, or does anybody have a different recommendation?
I'd recommend 24. You wanna poll?
I do wanna poll. That's what I'm doing.
This does not take into account the buying of a new property and getting all that, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Then I'd go with 12.
I'm okay with 12.
Okay, so it stays. Then the next, we're gonna continue through 1795030. Are there any other recommended changes on that?
Well, on D, actually, I show is crossing the entire subsection D out, but really, I just have a question. What, does the county have an obligation to make this notification to the state? And if so, do we have an obligation to make the notification within 60 days of the effective date, or can we wait until the urgency ordinance has lapsed?
There is an obligation to notify the state of rescinded or revoked. When local approval no longer exists for somebody, we do have a 60-day obligation to notify under Mal cursa. The, what this does, in addition to what's required by the state, is let the state know whether the rescission is simply due to a change of law versus some personal action on the part of the applicant, so that if they wanted to move and get a license in a place that allows, but we don't, the state wouldn't look at it and ding them for having it rescinded just because of a change in law.
But these people have licenses until the urgency ordinance expires.
Only locally. They don't have their state licenses.
Well, no, no, but we're telling them what's happening in the county. And I don't think we should tell them that until these licenses have expired at the end of the urgency ordinance, because I, my understanding is that you could have some real complications as far as whether you could, they could get a temporary state license if their license has been rescinded.
So it says...
Their license will not be rescinded until the end of the urgency ordinance.
It says that we would be telling them that they will be rescind, the state, that it would be rescinded as a matter of law in 90 days.
I would just like to change that so that we tell them after, you know, when it has been rescinded, we tell them then, not within 60 days.
We will tell them the effective date that they will no longer be able to cultivate legally in the county. That's what this does. So within 60 days of our enactment of this ordinance, we would notify the state, and we would say, "These individuals permit to cultivate in Calaveras County will expire on the 90th day." So they will know exactly what, when the end of their timeframe.
That's fine, just a statement of fact like that.
That's what it says here.
Not done. When you're saying that we're going to put away the urgency ordinance, and this is gonna go into effect, but you're saying that there are, you're gonna be reporting people they can't grow after 90 days?
So this is about, this is not, this D is about state licensure, not local permitting. We have to, we have two obligations under Mal cursa. One is we have to let them know within 60 days of a change in our law. We also have to let them know within 60 days of somebody being revoked, or denied, or whenever they lose their local permission. And this is just a mechanism to let everybody know that we're gonna be telling the state within 60 days of adopting an ordinance, that here's our change, and not only that, but here are the individuals who we allowed to grow. So they did have local permission, but these individuals will not be allowed to grow as of such-and-such a date. That way, the state won't issue a license for them to grow locally if they're not allowed to, but will not ding them if they want to move someplace else and change the site that they applied for on their state license.
And Peter, if you use the word expired instead of rescinded, as in this, it makes me feel better.
Do we also tell the state when they get a license?
It used to be that we had to, and now there will be, they will be presumed to be in compliance if we don't tell them they didn't get one. That's a new change in state law. There is a complex communication procedure with the state, but regardless, if they were issued a state license, it doesn't impact our ability to prohibit them from growing locally. Just because they have a state license to grow, there, it's very clear under Mal cursa that we, regardless of the state license situation, whether it's issued in error, shouldn't have been issued, we can still prohibit and enforce our own local laws.
But if we give them, if we give them a local license, or registration, the state doesn't know that.
We do let them know if we give a local license, we don't have to let the state know it says May, but it's a complicated process, but the state will presume that they, if they apply and indicate that they have a local license, the state's going to presume that they have one unless we tell them they don't.
And here, we will be telling them that they don't.
Right.
Does that necessarily mean that after the 90 days is up? What I'm concerned about is that the state's gonna look at, well, yeah, you said no fault here, but that the state's gonna say, "Well, we're not gonna even look at this person because their license has expired." And so, I don't know with a cart before the horse, or the chicken before the egg, or whatever. I don't want anything we do to mess up people being able to get a temporary license from the state.
So what this does is, instead of just saying, "They can't do it, we've told them they can't do it," we're explaining that the reason that they can't do it is not because they did something wrong, but because we're giving a reason, which if they, if we said, "You can't do it," we didn't give an explanation, they might not get a license elsewhere. Because the state would possibly assume that they, we denied them for some reason to do with their own personal conduct.
But what's the status after the 90 days, as far as the state and Calaveras County are concerned?
If we're, if, they would not be allowed to grow in Calaveras County, but they might have an easier time getting a license to grow elsewhere if we explain that the reason why they can't do it in Calaveras County is because of a change of law.
As long as you have a clear legal position that what we're doing here, number one, is required by state law, and number two, that it will not hamper getting of the new temporary licenses from the state in any way that's, that we shouldn't be doing.
So it goes beyond what's required by state law, only in that we give a reason why they're rescinded.
Okay. I would like, if you could use the word expire instead of rescind, it sounds less...
But I think that rescind is actually the appropriate term, that they don't, they haven't expired.
Okay.
So, I'm just having a real hard time with that one. What you're saying is, and I'm looking for the notes, because we had some notes. On January 1st, let's just say this ordinance passes. The date that it passes, according to the notes, it basically said 57 people qualified to grow in the zones that we've designated, right? Is that correct? Is that the number I seen?
That's an estimate, but, so there's a certain number of people that will continue to be able to cultivate.
But they have to get a new permit, the new ordinance. What we're telling the state is that the urgency ordinance has gone away, and therefore, everybody who received a registration under the urgency ordinance, even if they successfully apply for a new permit, that old permission has gone away in 90 days.
So on January 1st...
What about January 1st?
Okay, well, it will even be January 31st, because, okay, so as soon as this ordinance takes, on January 1st, they can all apply for their temporary license with the state.
Correct.
And then, we pass this ordinance, and it takes time to get through the supervisors, and then it goes through its 30-day advertising before it becomes effective. So now we're close to February. All of those that applied for their temporary license and paid for it in January, get, the state gets told in February, sorry, they don't get that.
So what they can do, they would be told they cannot grow in Calaveras County. If they have been issued a license, they could modify the license to go someplace else. They would have to get the state to approve a new site in a different location.
Until Calaveras County gives them permission to grow.
No, each license is specific to the location. But regardless, the law allows the locale at any time to decide whether it wants to allow growing or not.
Yep. But if under this ordinance, then they qualified for the new permit, by then, the temporary state license could continue?
So if their site is approved locally, and they haven't been issued a license, it won't affect whether they're issued a license. We would have notified the state. They would now have evidence of new local permission.
Right, okay.
I'm sure during public comment, if I got any of this wrong, I'll be corrected.
Are we overthinking, is this a case of us overthinking the problem?
I don't think so.
The intent here, sir, I can state that the intent here was to try to not mess people up who for no fault of their own no longer have local permission, and to inform the state that this is different than a rescission or revocation based on individual conduct. That's the point of this. So if there's other people's suggestions for language to make that better, we can certainly do that, but that's the intent here from the policy here, that was intended.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Lattish's points about rescission, I don't think it's a rescission. I think it's a lapse, or expiration.
Well, I think we're rescinding it because we're saying you can't, we're saying that it ends. So we have an urgency ordinance that's, right now, they have a registration that says that they can grow for a year. If we rescind, if we change the law, and under our permanent ordinance, we're saying these are no longer going to be valid, regardless of the expiration date on the registration. I think that the legal, I do think that rescission is the correct term. I'm not sure whether the use of that term is going to make a difference if we're clear in our intent in our letter to the state.
It might help in the letter to the state to say that the, include the information that this ordinance has passed. Just include that.
Oh, that was, yeah, that's the whole point of this, is it's because of the passage of the ordinance that we're notifying the state.
But I mean, that's just a part of the facts that are stated.
Oh, yes.
If we wanted to be really accurate about this, you would use the language in the urgency ordinance as to about what happens, and it's not rescinded, it's terminated. You would say, "These licenses are terminated." That's what the urgency ordinance says.
We could say that.
I think we probably beat this horse long enough. Damn, you're dead.
I totally, I'm just so confused by that. It makes no sense to me. But you guys are in complete agreement. We're not making any changes to that. We're leaving it alone.
With the suggestion that they mention the new ordinance.
Okay, and that is something you are doing anyway, correct? Do you need that in writing to satisfy you, or do you trust them?
Nope.
They don't trust you.
I don't, I mean, it's, we're doing principles here, and if you want to amend the language, please do.
The two things, okay, so one thing that really bothers me about this is that in three months, we're shutting down all growing except for maybe 55, 56, 57 grows, correct? That's what I mean.
Well, it may very well be that they will be shut down temporarily until they get a new permit.
Okay. Is there a way, because I have met with different people on both sides of the fence here, that they would be, or could be allowed to have nursery stock? Because if they lose that, according to what I've been told, they will not be able to get up and running with their permit once it's put back into effect.
I have specific recommendations on that, each time we get to the shutdown.
Okay, then I'm gonna leave it alone, and we're gonna move forward. Okay. So, anything for F and G?
Nope.
Any other commissioners? Okay, so we're going to 17.95.040, starting on page 7 of the county staff report. So nuisance declared cannabis cultivation and related activities prohibited. Does anybody have any items under?
I do under B.
Under B?
I do think we should consider, especially with the changes in state laws, that at least some distribution be allowed, and I think in my suggestions, I said, "It's, this isn't a ripe issue," but I think we could limit it so much that it is something we could direct county council to to do, and that, what we have, as I understand the distribution... what we have, as, as I understand the distribution situ-, situation, if we do nothing and we keep a ban on distributing within the county, the cultivators within Calaveras County will have to find a distributor in another county that will come and get the, the crop, take it back to the distributor, get it tested, and then, even if it's going to a dispensary in, in Arnold, then cart it back to Calaveras County, charging, of course, the cultivator, all these various transportation fees, and the question of whether those distributors, say in Sonoma County or Monterey County, are going to want the Calaveras County business is, is questionable, or at least a question. What I understand, and I've become clearer since I've wrote my recommendation, what I understand is there are one or two distributor licenses that the cultivator itself can get, so that we don't, at this point, have to license new separate businesses within the county.
That would require a microbusiness license.
Yeah, but.
No.
You'd have, or you'd have to get a separate distributor license.
Yeah.
There's two licenses here for.
Okay, so you're talking, so we're talking that they would need not just a cultivation license, but to apply for and receive a separate distributor license.
For self-distribution, not for, or transporting only.
Well, transporting on, you know.
Okay, so see, here's my, here's my point.
What I'm saying is that, I think, I think this is something that, there's a question as to whether, as of January 1st, whether the cultivators in Calaveras County are gonna be able to move any of their crops. And I think we, we should authorize, I'd like to direct the county council, county council, to, to draft something and present it to the board of supervisors that would permit just the types of licenses that the cultivator itself can, can have for distribution at this point, and then we could revisit the issue some other time. But that at least gets it so that these crops can move, and as, remember, the major C taxes, the whole basis for the tax is gonna change with track and trade, or track and trace, to be the, based on weight that's determined by the distributor. And so, we're not gonna be getting these, as I understand, we wouldn't be getting these tax returns or the monies until a distributor has actually weighed the stuff. And so, this is the crop, this is the amount, and that sets the tax. If the distributor's in Sonoma County, that's what the person, this, the county, this county would have to deal with. So, if we let the cultivators themselves do their own distribution, we keep that business within the county, we're not establishing new separate businesses that are gonna look like Walmart or something, that, within the county, we're just gonna allow the, the crops to go to market and allow us to be, continue collecting major C taxes.
So for me, the distribution license, there's two types of licenses under the state that will allow for self-distribution, otherwise they have to bring an outside service in to pick it up. This way, they can transport it for testing. Once it's tested, then they can take it to their distribution, and then that's when it gets weighed, and we get paid that, the tax revenue goes on. Without having a distribution of any kind, and I'm not talking about opening a distribution center and having manufactured centers, don't confuse that. I am talking about a license for the cultivator to take their own product out of county and see, I don't want it here, let it go somewhere else. That's great. So, they need a license to get it out of county. They need a license to have it tested. We don't have a testing facility. We don't have any distribution facilities. So we either have to find people that are willing to come from other counties here to pick up their product, or we have to let them get it out of county. It, it's something we should be looking at. I mean, I prefer it to go out of county personally.
I think, I think they would need this license, distributor license, to get it to the dispensary in Arnold.
Well, but you wanna be careful, and, and if you wanna add different distributor licenses, you can, but there are two license types. They can.
No, no, I don't, no, no, I do not want to add more of this kind. Keep it as limited as possible.
There, there's two license types that the cultivator, registered grower, can get, and it's based on dollar volume and poundage. Is that correct, all of you growers know this answer? Yes, okay. So, it would not be a commercial license where they can drive around and pick up everybody's, the, the stuff and travel with it. It would be specific to their own growing. That would be the two license types that I would consider based on the volume on the license, just so they can take it where it needs to go. Either that, or they're gonna grow it, and it stays right here on their property.
And we don't collect.
And we might as well just say, let's go ban.
I agree with that concept, but I, I understand you also need testing in order to get the tax. And that's out of county?
Yes.
I don't understand why we're saying that. Why does the testing have to be out of county?
Because we don't allow for testing or manufacturing facilities here in the county.
I think.
I don't get it. That's what I'm saying. Why is that not true?
If we do, if we, because that's not something the supervisors have given direction on. They were very clear.
Well, they've given us some crazy directions sometimes, and sometimes.
I'm, I'm gonna ask you guys not to do that again, please.
I mean, that's the whole point of today's session, as we talked about ad nauseam at the beginning. We do have to try to get something sensible to the supervisors.
It would be very costly and long-term to open a testing facility and to find somebody to do it, and open one here in the county. So, for now, if the supervisors want to do that at a later date, they can do that. But for now, there has to be, if they consider doing regulation, and that's what the supervisors decide to do, there needs to be a, an ability for them to distribute it and get it out of county. Otherwise, it's stuck right here on their own property.
I agree with that, up to the word out of county, but yeah. They have, they have to put it in the back of their truck or whatever.
Then they have to notify the sheriff.
And drive it somewhere.
Blah, blah, blah.
You can grow all the corn you want, but if, if you don't have a truck, you can't drive it someplace to sell it, or.
I just wanna, I just wanna clarify. Certainly, this is a policy discussion. If, if they didn't have their own distributor license, then a licensed distributor headquartered out of county would trans-, would come and pick up the product, transport it to a lab, and that's how it would work. So, it's not illegal, or, or somehow that it would never move, it's just that it wouldn't be done by themselves.
Assuming that, that you get the business from, that the distributor in a timely fashion will come and do it, and then if the distributor has to travel 156 miles to do it, he's gonna charge for that. So, this is just.
Right, it's a policy. I didn't want to make it sound like there is no legal way for it.
Yeah, no, I understand. And what I'm proposing is we give you a policy direction and.
Recommendation.
Yeah.
Just so long as it doesn't come back here.
I don't know that we can put that in writing.
That's a 5-0 recommendation.
Is that, is that a poll for yes, to do that?
I think it makes sense to do that.
But only restricted to the two license, where the cultivator, grower themselves have to do the transporting.
For this moment.
For this mo-, well.
Yeah.
In this ordinance.
Yeah, in this ordinance as it currently stands.
Okay, now where am I? Okay, was there anything else under?
Oh, and I might point out that the distribution was something in the, in the 2016 proposed ordinance, so, and it was mentioned in the EIR, so we shouldn't have any problem with that.
Okay, so are we moving on to 17.95.040? I didn't poll you all. Is everybody okay with a distribution license for the actual cultivator, registered cultivator?
I'm not, but I'm the only one, so it's okay.
Okay, so one, two, three, four. Four to one. Okay.
And that was, that was 040.
On 04, okay, 040, we're.
Because, we'll have to, I'm sure county council's on top of this, but they'll have to amend subsection B to take out the word distributing and transporting, since that's now together, and then there's.
Actually, I don't think they're gonna take out any words, and we shouldn't be wordsmithing. All they're gonna do is do a separate sideline to the supervisors as a recommendation.
If, if indeed the supervisors.
Okay, but it's just going as a recommendation as a sideline. It's not being incorporated in wordsmithing.
We, we understand that we can't say we're prohibiting it if we're allowing it.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go on to 17.95.050, page eight.
We've already dealt with the 50 particularly.
Okay, so we polled earlier, saying that we don't like the number 50, that it should go with the urgency ordinance. Then, I did have something, and it looks like you do too. Does any other commissioners have any comments on this?
I just, since we've already polled, I'm not gonna go into all my arguments, is why I think the 50 grows would not work. But amongst other things, I think it's unnecessary for environmental purposes, because we're limiting grows as far as the specific zones and strict acreage and setback requirements. So it's, it's, it just causes a lot more problems than it solves, and it might result in less major C taxes, so I'm against the 50. I do want to point out the, to county council, my suggestion under subparagraph B, that a strict reading of the, of the draft would indicate that anybody who has an application pending is qualified, and that's why I put in the language saying applicants who are found to be qualified under the terms. It's on page 10. Yeah, we're in 0, we're in nine, 17.95.050.
Okay, we can clarify.
I'm sorry, what?
We can clarify if you feel it's not adequately clear, yes.
Okay.
Okay, is there any further comments on that one? Everybody's good?
Yes.
Okay. So then we will go to.
We're still on the same section. I've got something on the subsection B13. And this is the.
B13?
Oh, I'm sorry, B3. This is where, we're talking about the shut, shutting down. Cultivation on the parcel must nonetheless cease within 90 days of the enactment of this chapter. I think there should be a provision, and this was what the chair was referring to earlier, allowing between, in the gap between the end of the urgency ordinance and the granting of new permits, for qualified growers to maintain nursery stock, which we could term non-flowering stock, indoors, in pots or containers. I suggest of a total canopy size up to 10% of the canopy to be permitted for cultivation. Without such a provision, people are gonna lose their crop for the year, and, and we will likely lose growers and lose major C tax money.
I would probably say immature plants, because to have a nurse, a commercial nursery, you need a nursery license.
It's not, okay, takeout nursery, immature, immature plants. Remember, this is a policy direction. You have the terminology.
Okay.
So non-flowering, whatever you wanna say, immature, non-flowering stock indoors. And I have a similar comment at each time we get to a shutdown within 90 days. I'm not sure how we do the, if we cease within, okay, never mind. Go on, I'm done.
Yes, we should.
Maybe before you poll, one of the things that we had discussed was some type of notification of those who intend to either continue to cultivate on the site they're at, or to apply to relocate. And so, maybe if that's the desire of the, of the commission to allow this, these immature plants to be maintained, that, that can incorporate into, into some provisions, so we know who's doing that, and it's not just sort of a open-ended, oh, I'm sort of holding on to these for, you know, some future, you know.
I think, I think that's a great idea. And by the way, I, I have some suggestions on pages 13 and 14 to find other transition, things where they could give you notice that they're, either that they're not going anywhere, that they are going somewhere, or that sort of thing.
Well, I think that, okay, let's, let's start here.
One of the, okay, back to immature plants, non-flowering.
If they're going to have to move, or, and take, and shut down their garden.
They have to shut down their garden, whether they're moving or not.
Can I finish?
Yeah, sorry. I'm very sorry.
Ken, if they're going to shut down their garden, and they have to reestablish somewhere else, they are, they, they need the ability to keep their non-flowering, immature plants to go with them, and I want to take a poll to find out if you guys are okay with that. And they've suggested, I think you said, what, 10% of stock?
10%, of the canopy.
10% of the canopy, and then that would go to their application with the, with the planning department, explaining they're going to be moving, and they're gonna stay in county, and they're gonna keep 10% of their stock non-flowering. Are you guys okay with that?
No.
Yes.
If I understand, that applies to anybody, whether they're moving or not.
Yeah.
Because there could be a gap period between the expiration of 90 days and the issuance of a new registration.
Exactly, and, and so I think this provision needs to be for everybody that's being told that they have to cease cultivation within 90 days, this is an exception to that. Wherever that comes into.
It sounds like it's almost.
So we're telling them they have to cease cultivation. Oh, but you can still grow?
That's an exception.
You can't, you can't cultivate, though. You're just going to keep a non-flowering product for starting your garden up once you get resell.
Well, I, I would, I would think that it would be, they can keep 10%, you know, say they've got a, all of a sudden, they have half their immature plants die for some reason, that they could keep that 10% limitation.
What if the 10% starts flowering?
They have to throw it out. If it's non-flower, it gets non-flowering. You put flowers, you throw it out, but you could replenish, and, but keep, keep it to that.
I mean, have, have we talked about, or are we gonna talk about, the obvious delay in this whole thing? I mean, it sounds like there's gonna be an entire year lost to the growers who do eventually make it.
Yep.
I mean, that's the realities of this.
And I, I, my recommendations through this, try to take care of some of that.
Right.
It is, it's a real problem. I mean, you know, we, we probably are gonna see growers that say, well, thanks for the regulation, but no thanks, I'm going to Sonoma.
I just want to poll. You want it, or you don't? I don't care.
No.
I want it, the nurse, the.
Yes.
Immature, non-flowering.
How are we gonna regulate immature and non-flowering?
If it's non-flower.
If it starts smelling, you'll know.
Yeah, it's gonna start, it's all gonna start flowering.
It doesn't flower unless, we'll have a talk later on.
You know? Do you grow?
No. But there's birds and bees, sort of a.
I was serious. What are you hitting me for?
I do not.
Didn't know the answer. I thought you did.
I don't even smoke.
Okay, so let's move on. Question I want to start.
Well, there's no, there's no specified time limitation on how long they get to keep these, but I guess it's sort of self-limiting by the non-flowering.
Yeah.
Idea. So, I mean, if we're gonna do this, it seems to make sense to me.
So, if it doesn't flower, and it does take them a year, obviously, that. So if it doesn't flower and it does take them a year, obviously that plant, and from what I've learned sitting here, in three to four months, it's going to mature. Am I correct?
Nope.
No.
If it's growing, if it's continued light under, also.
I can't see who's talking. What did you say, Bill? Bring him to the mic, please. Can you come to the mic? Thank you.
If you keep any immature plant at eighteen hours or more a day under light, and it can just be a light bulb, okay, it will not flower.
Okay.
Okay, it will continue to grow. It may get as big as its womb.
How do you?
Provided you have enough soil.
So if you don't let it flower, you can't get a seed from it to keep cloning it. Is that a correct statement or am I not aware?
No, a clone is a cut from the actual plant.
Got it.
A seed is, the male plant is allowed to flower and bust its little pollen pods and spread its seed, so to speak, to the females, which then produce seed.
Okay, so, but they could take a plant that they're not allowing to flower and keep cloning it until they can get their garden up and going?
They could keep taking cuttings off and restarting those cuttings.
Got it.
In another.
Without letting it flower?
Right.
Thank you, that was my question.
It's always nice to be based on reality sometimes.
Okay, so do I have three yeses, one, two, three? Okay. You got that? Okay. Next.
Okay. Again, paragraph four is talking about zoning that's incompatible, but we have the same flowering thing. So let's just assume that through this, county council will be able to pick out every time we say stop growing within ninety days, we have the immature, non-flowering plants.
I think I can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, okay, on four B, I think that this is, this is where I'm bringing up the, the possibility of getting a conditional permit, a new permit, on the condition that remediation work will be done within the now twelve-month period. And that it could be secured by a bond or something so that we're not giving away the store. I am concerned about people who will take twelve months to remediate their property. In the meantime, they're not going to be able to get a new permit under the terms of the draft. And so I think there's, again, we don't, we can't expect people to stick around if they can't grow and they can't earn money. And of course, if they can't grow and can't earn money, we don't get major C. So that's, that's my suggestion and.
You lost me somewhere on there.
Excuse me?
You kind of lost me in your.
Oh, okay. It's during the remediation time.
Right.
Okay, which is twelve-month period. The way things are written, they're not going to be able to get their new permit until that condition is satisfied. So that's, that's a, you know, perhaps a twelve-month period, perhaps longer. The, in the meantime, I think there should be a way that they can get their new permit as long as the county is secured in some ways to ensure that the remediation happens.
What he is suggesting is that they purchase and prove to the county that they have some sort of a performance bond. So let's just say that they're in the process of moving, they start growing over here, but they don't complete that cleanup over here and they decide to walk out of the county and leave us an environmental disaster. That performance bond would pay the county back for the cleanup on that property. Now, whether or not there's even a company out there that will issue a bond on the cannabis industry, nobody knows. So that's a big question. I mean, personally, I think every one of these cultivations should have a performance bond to secure this county in paying for environmental cleanup. That should be in this document, no matter if it's for remediation and moving or whether it is just because you are a cultivator. But I don't know that there's a company that does it.
I don't know there is either.
So, I mean, as far as asking for a performance bond, if they were willing to post that, that's going to be a lot of money. That's not going to be a cheap bond. And contractors do it regularly on their jobs. So if they could find a company to ensure them to post a performance bond, would you be willing to let them go ahead and move to their new location, start building while they're cleaning up at the same time? Or do you want them for that twelve-month period completely shut down no matter what until they're certified? With a performance bond, what they're saying is you're guaranteed certification. If they're willing to post that bond, they're saying, I'm cleaning it up so I can get my money back.
And there may be some way other than a bond that the, the county can be secure in its, in its, in that the obligations of the remediation be carried out. I, I, I just mentioned a bond as a, as a possibility. I, I, I don't, I, I, I don't have an answer. But.
Well, I think that what I would like to do is ask, just, just throwing this out there, is it possible that we can have, look into if there's ability to get a performance bond for this type of issue for environmental cleanup and make a recommendation to the board of supervisors to take it up?
I mean, it's, I can, I mean, just off the top of my head, I, I would be possible to get a bond for cleanup, which is separate than for growing.
That's what we're looking for is specifically cleanup.
I don't know enough about the industry. We can look into it.
I would like to have them look into that and take it to the board of supervisors. How do you all feel about that?
I think they were spinning their wheels. I think that if they don't have, if they can't complete it in twelve months, they need to stop and how to get it done. They need to pay special attention to getting that done first instead of spending half their time on their new grow and the other part of their time getting that completed. No, they need to spend all their time getting the first phase completed and then move on to the second phase.
Assuming that they have enough funds to do both and hire people to do both.
That's my point, they're going to spend all their funds on the second phase and they're going to let that first phase.
But they're not, they, a lot of them will not. They probably will say, okay, I can't grow this year, I have to go somewhere else and I know you'd be very happy with that. But it's not the way I'd like to do business if they can, if the county can be secure that, that a, by issuing a new conditional cultivation permit conditioned on this remediation and it be secure that it's going to, going to actually happen, I think the county comes out a winner because we will continue to get major C taxes.
Opinions? I mean, I personally would like to see a performance bond added to the ordinance no matter what, if it's something that can be done. I would like the supervisors to look into it and have staff check on if there's an ability for the cleanups.
I, I would agree with you and I, I just have to comment, this sounds like we're getting more and more towards the, the big corporate America approach to, to raising cannabis. And that's been pretty obvious, but nobody's talked about it.
Well, unfortunately, with the new emergency regs that passed.
Yeah.
They just shot the little guy in the foot and said, you're not welcome anymore. We're going to take it to fifty acres and they didn't keep their promises. So you're right, and it is big industry.
We're trying.
They said they were going to.
We're trying to protect every, every citizen.
So does anybody want to, to pursue the performance bonds or just let it go and let the supervisors come up with it on their own?
No, I, I'd like to have county council explore the possibility of, well, I think that they could write it in the, the draft for a new cult, a conditional new cultivation permit if it is secured to the satisfy, satisfaction of the county that it is secure that the remediation will be paid for if the person doesn't do it.
So there's two separate issues I'm hearing. One is performance bond for the remediation. The other is a performance bond just for being a cultivator. The performance bond for being the cultivator might be more difficult with companies. So I'm just saying, so let's poll on both issues separately.
So do you want to allow a performance bond for remediation while they continue to grow?
Under the new permit.
Yes, I would agree with that. I'm not so sure about the other aspect of it.
Well, I, I think that she just gave a good point for that.
She did. I think if they can't get it done in twelve months, they should not be, continue to grow somewhere else. They should, they should be halted until they finish it.
Okay, so, so I just want to poll both issues. The first issue is, do we want a performance bond to be added to this for all registrations period, cultivating or not?
I'd like to see that happen, but it's not, I don't think that it's possible. It's not going to be able to happen.
I don't want to complicate things by adding that at this point.
Okay, so two noes?
Well, I don't know what you're asking. You want, are you asking, do I want it to be as a part of our resolution or that it's in the regulation or that we simply recommend it to the board?
We recommend it to the board.
Well, I'd recommend it, yeah.
For every grow?
Yes.
A performance bond?
For every grow.
So you can.
Not, not just this.
No, the remediation, I thought I said that. Remediation, yes.
Every grow, I'm not so sure about.
What I'm hearing is that there may be three votes that remediation will be required within twelve months and, and there will need to be remediation completed before a permit is issued under the new ordinance unless somehow they're able to get a performance bond. And if they're able to meet that condition, they would then be able to go forward. So that's one issue I'm hearing.
And I think there's three noes on that.
No.
I'd, I'd say yes to that.
There's two.
I'm saying yes.
Commissioner Worcester?
I think the reason we wrote this the way we wrote it was to motivate people to get this remediation done. And by definition, if you had a really clean operation, there's not much to remediate.
Correct, correct. No, stop.
And so I'm, I think we should leave it the way it is. I don't have a problem with suggesting to the board that they could explore that.
Looking into it.
Alternative, but I would not change the draft.
And I would agree.
Okay.
Okay.
So there you go.
And then the second issue is, it sounds like most people, I don't know if I'm saying this right, they're, whether we want a performance bond to be a cultivator. If we're not sure yet whether or not companies will do that, you can direct staff to write that into the draft, assuming that we find that it's possible to do that.
That's what I.
For the second issue, which is just a performance bond to cultivate.
Performance bond for what though?
I know, that's, but I heard that as a separate issue.
Say that you're a cultivator, your farm fails, you lose your crop and you can't afford to restart it and you decide to walk away and leave your mess and now there's cleanup to be done. The county's going to be on the hook for that.
It's remediation again.
Yes.
The state requires a performance bond in case they need to have the crop destroyed. Okay, they have, they require a performance bond in case state enforcement, removal of the license requires a crop to be destroyed. I'm not sure whether the state is going to be providing funds for local crop destruction or not. So that was an area where performance bonds, you know.
What liability does the, the state have in that? That liability falls on our county.
So as I'm saying, I don't know where, if they're passing that money back, but I know that one of the application requirements is a perform, for cultivators, a performance bond.
I would just like to ask staff to look into it and if they see that it looks good, give it to the supervisors to decide up or down.
I think that's fine.
Okay. Do you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on. Okay.
Okay, so down to subparagraph five, there, I, I'm suggesting, and this is, this is the paragraph there where if the zoning is incompatible, like people can apply to amend the zoning designation. And I think there should be an exception to this alternative, saying it is not available to growers who have been growing on RR or RA lots in areas such as Rancho Calaveras covered by special plans that limit zoning to RR or RA. It just, you know, Calaveras, Rancho Calaveras is under a special plan that limits zoning to RR. And there's, I don't want to see people spinning their wheels asking for rezoning when we have.
Well, they would be denied anyway and I'm sure the planning department would inform them at the minute they came to the counter.
Well, that's why I just think, it just should be in here so people understand. And besides, it's going to reassure supervisor Tofanelli that there will not be any cannabis grow other than non-flowering plants and personal grow in Rancho Calaveras, which is one of.
I don't think it needs to be in there. I think it's pretty clear that there's a special district.
I, I, I understand where you're coming from. I think it's unnecessary based on the language of the special, special plan itself that we would not be able to approve such a zoning.
I, I agree, but it just, it just is, will be out there if we just, if we put it in. It, it'll be clear that supervisor Tofanelli can check off that, that requirement it is.
I don't feel it's necessary to any of.
I don't think it's necessary either because it's already, they're not going to be able to grow in that zone, so.
Well, I think if they came with their money to the counter, Peter's staff is going to say, I'm sorry, we can't accept your money for that application because it's not a possibility.
It's not, yeah, it's not going to happen. At least to me.
Well, we would have to take in the application, but we certainly wouldn't be recommending approval.
That's just, I mean, we're just, we're suggesting people, why don't we just put it in there so everybody knows and it's out there and it's taken care of and then.
Okay, let me poll everybody.
All right. Not needed.
Not needed.
Not needed.
Needed.
Next item.
The, the non-flowering plant should be in there also. Okay, but everybody agrees that in the, in the, in that zone, there can be no cultivation under this ordinance.
Yes.
Except for non-flowering plants temporarily.
Okay. So moving on to, I'm trying to manage too many sheets here.
I think we're up to oh five oh C on page ten.
Yeah, there are, on my materials on pages thirteen and fourteen are more suggestions as far as, as Peter was suggesting that we might need to have certain things about giving certain notices at certain times. If the commission could just look at that and decide whether they want to have planning director and county council consider such things without going through this one and doing things that make sense as far as giving note, certain notices. This is on page thirteen and fourteen.
So.
I don't want to take up a bunch.
We are still on one seven nine five oh five oh. And now we are looking at, are you good with B, A through D or do you have changes?
I, okay, I'm, I'm unclear what you're, what you're asking.
I'm asking you, we are on one seven point nine five point zero five zero.
B.
B.
And I'm going to after C. It would make more sense if you were.
Okay, so you're going to C. I don't want, no. Okay, so now we're on to C, indoor commercial.
No, 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 little C. Five C on the bottom of page nine. Thirteen and fourteen of my materials, it'll make sense.
But it confuses the audience because they're following the staff report.
No, I know, I know, but this is not something that's on the staff report.
So tell us what a recommendation.
Other possible transition provisions that we should consider, such as, okay, you want me to read these out? One, within forty-five days of the effective date, all permitted and, and applications pending growers, that I'm going to talk about as P A P Gs, must notify the planning department whether they are planning to continue to grow crops on the same parcel. If not, remediation and restoration activities must start within one hundred days after the effective date of the ordinance.
Well, first of all, they're supposed to start within ninety days. Second of all, they already have to go in and notify the county of that, so are you just changing the language?
I'm giving, I'm giving specific periods of time. I, I, I'm just, I'm trying to make it more workable if people, when people look at the ordinance, they know, okay, I have to do this.
I, I, I think that we can, we intended to develop some program like that and I think we can work in some language that would effectively provide that kind of process and, and it gives us a better understanding of what we're looking at going into the future.
Who's doing what? What I would, I, I would like to just suggest that the planning department and county council look at these suggestions and do what they think is right. And I'm not going to argue in favor or against or anything else. That would save time.
Okay, so staff is telling you they're already working on this. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that. I'd appreciate it if they look at these things.
We'll look, okay.
Thank you. That's all I need.
Okay.
C, big C.
Let's go to C on page 10 of the staff report and ordinance. So, on C, there was, that's why this isn't red, I don't know. They, they limited, and I think this was because of Supervisor Tofanelli's request, limited M zones to five people. I don't understand why. Is that because we only have three and we're not allowing new registrations, or what was the issue with that?
That was a similar issue with the 50 outdoor cultivation.
It's a cap.
It's a cap.
Okay, but how many grows do we have in manufactured zones?
We have, I believe there were 13 or 14 applications for indoor cultivation, and I, I don't remember the number, maybe four or five that were in industrial zone. Some of them are, we've got, I think, two that have been issued.
Okay, so, we're looking at 13, 14 total, but we're looking at capping it at five, so then, once again, we're looking at a lottery system to choose who gets to grow and who doesn't in those zones.
And, but some of those indoor cultivations were on non-industrial land. They were in ag or, and unclassified zones.
And this is where I'd cut in and say Supervisor Tofanelli's suggestion was M1, M2, and M4 zones to remain as indoor only and with current number. He did not say limit indoor commercial to M1, M2, and M4 zones. We recommended certain specifics that, as to, that they could be grown elsewhere with certain acreage. And we had very specific recommendations. Planning Commission recommended indoor commercial cultivation would also be allowed in AP, A1, and GF zones after possible moves and rezoning, as conflict, as we've talked about before. Of five acres or more with carbon filtration systems with 200-foot setbacks from any residentially zoned parcel, otherwise normal existing county setbacks. That's what we decided before. There's really nothing in Supervisor Tofanelli's suggestion that says it's limited to M1, M2, and M4. If you know that that's what he intended, then we have to deal with that, but otherwise-
We, we spoke with Supervisor Tofanelli, and that was what his intent was.
That is what his intent was.
Okay, so, you're basically, I mean, you can say you have 13 or 14 in that criteria area. You can say that maybe two of them are permitted, but you will unpermit every single one of them, because none of them have a 200-foot setback that are currently registered. They're in warehouses, they're indoors, they're charcoal-filtered. So, why are we doing a 200-foot setback on those indoors? Can we, are we gonna-
That's not the, that's, that didn't apply to the M, the industrial zone.
Are we gonna deal with the issue of the cap first?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, let's do that. How do you all feel about a cap of five, when you've got 13 out there?
13 applications, is that-
13 to 14.
I think we have the same legal problems.
We have the same legal problems we had the other way.
I, I would suggest that we, we do the same thing that we did before, as far as those that have, have qualified are in, and those that have applications pending, continue that application process, and those that qualify, they also get in. But we, we can limit it to industrial zones and satisfy that condition of-
I would just limit it to the urgency ordinance applications, providing for no new.
Yeah. That's, and, and do that qualification, continue to study the qualifications while-
Commissioner Worcester?
Well, are we limiting this indoor commercial cultivation to the M1, M2, or M4 zones?
Yeah, and the only question that I have right now, based on what I'm hearing, is the purple in there is the change that Supervisor Tofanelli added, and so you had voted against a cap before, or pulled against a cap, and the question is, do you want, for the same reasons, to not have a cap, but to regulate in other ways?
But we did contemplate them being in A1, AP, and GF zones.
I, that's a separate issue.
No, I know, but I think that's-
Right.
Well, but they tie together. And reading the bullet points, what the planning commission came up with was, M1, M2, and M4 would be retained for indoor cultivation.
Correct.
There was nothing in here about allowing indoor cultivation in A1 or AP. Now, if you limit it to the industrial zones, there really doesn't seem to be much of a need for a cap.
Well, the, the bullet points weren't always consistent with what we did. And the, the part one of the video of the 9/29 Planning Commission meeting, at 1 hour and 27 minutes to 1 hour and 29 minutes, and 1 hour 32 minutes and 39 minutes, was where we worked out the in, commercial indoor. So, we did decide that it could be in AP, A1, and GF zones, and we came up with very specific limitations on that. I'm not saying we have to stick with that. If we, we can agree with the intent of Supervisor Tofanelli and keep all of this in M1, M2, and M4, and as I understand it, the current two that are in, in operation are in one of these zones, correct?
We have, we have three-
Oh, three.
-that are in, in industrial zones. We have nine that are in other zones, each of which would not be permitted, so they would have to relocate if they were to qualify. And I don't know the status of them right now.
So, we do have nine commercial indoor grows-
Yes, two in unclassified, two in residential agricultural, and five in RR. And I don't know the status. I think most of them are still in pending status.
But they're in operation.
But they're in operation. So, clearly, those nine would have to shut down and either relocate or, you know, cease operation. The question is, would they be able to relocate to the A, the ag or the forest zone, or do you want to limit it strictly to the industrial zone? That's the policy.
Are some of those in Rancho?
I, I don't know where they're located. But if they are, they definitely would have to move.
That's, yeah, that was my point. They're gonna have to move anyway.
Commissioner Worcester, do you have a preference on that?
Well, I think we've already set a preference, and the commission has to not have a cap, and I would limit it to the M zones.
I'm with you.
I think you got it.
Okay.
You might, okay, I'm not sure the audience-
So, as I understand, the direction was that there'd be no cap, but indoor cultivation would be limited only to the industrial zones.
And that those that are currently operating in others, you'd have the same sort of-
Have the same opportunity to relocate.
With, and the, and the non-flowering plants and all that stuff. Okay? Okay, we'll get to D?
We can go to D, but I was still looking for a note that I made under this section.
Sure.
It's next step, and I don't understand what I was trying to tell myself. Okay, let's go on to D. If I need to come back, I will.
Okay, on D, we've clearly, after lots of discussion, planning commission said that these commercial cannabis registrations are transferable, and the draft says that they are not transferable, and I think that needs to be changed.
That is correct. I think part of the concern is you have a sunset date, and so, having them transferable, having them running with the land, having a sunset date seemed a little bit more difficult.
I'm not saying running with the land, I'm just going with the transferable, and they're transferable subject to the sunset date. So, you know, we, we really went through a whole lot of discussion on this before, and that's where we ended up.
What section are you on?
We're on D.
O50D.
I think that's correct. I would not add the phrase, as Commissioner Latisha suggested, unless otherwise provided in a future ordinance. I mean, that's always true.
That's fine.
So, he, we're saying that we did say it would run with the land, and it is transferable.
Okay. Is that three?
One, two, three, four. Okay, on to 1795.060.
And, you know, there are a lot of places where I suggested some changes that are really meant to, for the ease of the reader and the clarity and this sort of thing. I just asked county council to pay attention to what minor changes I might have made, and treat them as suggestions.
We will consider those.
Yeah. The, I, I do think, we're talking now under 060B1, talking about a plot plan. Since we are going to require the growers to have a grading permit, and I fully agree with this, before they do any grading, I think that we should provide them with the option, and this is on page 17 of my materials, to submit two cultivation area plans, one that involves grading and one that does not, so that they could grow that year while they're getting their grading permit, and then getting the grading done, and et cetera. So, they could still have some grow, but it would not involve, the, would not, the temporary grow would not involve any grading. So, two alternative site plans, or I guess site plan issue, A1.
You just completely lost all of this. I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, you're on page 17.
17, yeah.
But on-
Put it up.
On ours, we're trying to make it-
11, oh, page 11, A1, near the top of the page. So, I, I think that what you're suggesting is that a cultivation area could change. I, I don't think that, that necessarily needs to be written into code, that, you know, they've identified, this is where we're gonna be going, and they're, if they intend to cultivate in an ungraded area, that they would show that on their site plan. And if they were to come back the following year, or later that year, and say, "We want to move our cultivation site over here, and we're gonna grade this pad," they would need to go through whatever process to amend their application and to get the grading permit, and it would still have to meet all the criteria for where they could cultivate.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that they can do that simultaneously. They say, "Here's what we're gonna do in the interim. This isn't as good a site. I'm not gonna be able to grow the full amount."
And that could be shown on the site plan as well.
Yeah, okay, so, so, A site plan could show grow site number one, and then grow site number two, and with a clear understanding that if that went, say, above 22,000 square feet, it was that there would be growing on this one first, and then on that one, once all the grading permits and the grading happened. I, I just want to make sure that they have a chance to, do they, that we won't use, lose a year's crop.
They can do that now, though, correct? They can submit their plot plan?
Under the ordinance, they could do that. They could, they could show that, that this is our interim site, and here's our final site.
Okay. If, if, I think it's, it's nice if we let people know what's available, if that can be done one way or another, whether it's in the ordinance or out. As long as it's permissible, that's my concern.
As long as it meets all the other criteria, I don't think that that would be a problem.
Okay.
Okay, so, on, on A, just overall content, it's saying a complete application, mandatory form content, which will be developed by the planning department. Okay, so, my question is, do they have to completely fill out everything all over again, or are you keeping a file on them, and this will be a continuation on their file of their urgency ordinance, their background checks, their plot maps, their, if they're in compliance, the urgency ordinance package would continue on, or do they have to start fresh with a brand-new registration package?
We want a new application package. There's a new permit, a new process, yeah. And, part of the problem we have is that the plot maps we had on many of these were insufficient, and it created some problems for us. We want to see an accurate site plan, drawn to scale. We've had some crap submitted to us. Technical planning term.
Oh, oh, okay.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, just clarity on that. Next item was B, commercial cultivation, application shall additionally provide the planning department with, and I need to check to make sure nobody else had any issues on A.
Well, I don't understand the last paragraph, where it says, "Any other information required to complete the application form required under subsection 17.95160A," of which there isn't one. And if it means 60A, that's the section you're in.
Oh, yeah, I think that's what we meant. 060, I, I think the issue here was whether to write out everything or devise the entire application form now, or just say, "We'll develop one, and it'll, it'll be posted later." I think that was the intent.
Okay, because the planning department's gotta come up with the content.
Right.
So, I, so I think this, this might be-
That just, that should be-
That should be 060A.
Yeah.
Okay, now I think it makes some sense.
Also known as this subdivision, subsection.
The problem is, when you have A, and then one, is it, what is the subsection? Is it a sub-subsection? I think that's the difficulty we run into.
I have a suggestion on B4. It's even different than the suggestion I made in my materials. The, if, if, if the application is for outdoor and mixed light cultivation, I'm suggesting that they could provide a proof of filing of the complete application with a notice of intent with the water board. Not have to wait until they actually get the notice of applicability from the water board, because I am concerned that as of January 1st, the water board is going to be overwhelmed with applications, and it may be nine months, 10 months before it's going to be able to get to actually issuing notice of applicability. And again, we're stalling out on the procedures of actually getting stuff planted and taxes collected. So, I, I would like to see an alternative to waiting for the notice of applicability, because you're not gonna, you're not going to get that until the water board has acted. And you also, you do, you are going to be getting under, under subsection seven, the biological site assessment that they have, will have submitted to the water board if, when they have filed a complete application with a notice of intent.
I think it's probably reasonable, and we will require that the NOA be issued before we issue our permit, but for the application purpose, the NOI might be sufficient, if they don't already have the NOA.
Well, isn't that the document that was supposed to have been submitted by September 7th of 2016?
But we'll also be looking at potentially new sites, if they're relocating.
And also, isn't that gonna change from regional water board to state water?
It is, still, the Regional Water Quality Control Board will be issuing that.
It'll still be the same.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a yes? Everybody's in agreement with doing that?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so now we're going on to C.
Where the sheriff has raised some concerns, but he, he seemed to be satisfied that the language and- He, he seemed to be satisfied that the language and, in sub-paragraph two, that the language and other relevant factors would be sufficient for him, so he doesn't have to rely just on 26057. But we did bring up, as county council mentioned, and toward the end of that paragraph where it says the sheriff shall provide the criminal history information, I think what you were suggesting Julie was that.
To the extent allowed by law.
To the extent allowed by state law.
It's already been addressed, right?
Yeah.
Well, on this whole section, the sheriff also suggested that he would have the say on this rather than have the planning director have the say on it. And I think I agree with that because he's the person who is supposed to know about whether or not the criminal history is sufficiently germane and sufficiently serious to be a disqualifying factor. I'm also a little concerned about trying to come up with a differential standard, whether that's a potential basis for litigation, whether the planning director deferred enough or not enough to the sheriff's recommendation. So I think that we should leave this decision subject to appeals in the hands of the sheriff. And I would make the same comment with respect to the EMA determination. I don't know why we should have the planning director doing this.
So, should, if we, I was gonna say, would your recommendation be to have standards that are similar to the state's standards in terms of how the sheriff reviews the criminal background checks?
Already provides he's considered all other relevant factors.
I'm sorry?
It already provides that he's to consider all other relevant factors. And so, leave it, leave it up to him.
I'm, I'm great for separation of powers and I, I think, I think having sheriff input, you get his law enforcement expertise. I think the, leaving it to the planning director and we all, always have to keep in mind that currently, in my opinion, we have a planning director who exercises his discretion very well. We might have a planning director who does not. We may also have a sheriff sometime who's going to be very arbitrary and says, gee, on all these relevant factors, I, this guy stole the gumball in 1958 and I'm going to deny him. I would like to keep, keep the division so that the sheriff has his expertise, he makes the recommendation to the planning director and the planning director does, does the final decision that's subject to appeal.
I disagree, the sheriff needs to have the final say so because he can see things that the planning director cannot see and he can see things that cannot be shared necessarily with the board or the director. The sheriff's department should have the final say.
That's scary.
I think we got into all sorts of crazy confidentiality situations more than once in the last few months just because of this situation. As long as the sheriff's decision could then be appealed to the board, which I think it would be.
It would have, yeah, I mean, it would be appealed to an administrative hearing officer, the planning, or the planning commission, depending on how we set up the appeal process. So then my question would be, if you want to do that for the sheriff, do you want to do that also for the environmental health as a separate unit?
No, because the sheriff is a constitutional office and environmental health is not.
I agree.
I, I don't see the difference.
Thank you, Lisa. I appreciate that thought. I wouldn't have thought of it, but you're absolutely right, yes. But I do agree with commissioners to my right, for once.
I would like, before we poll, a non-biased opinion from the planning director as to the benefits of leaving it to the planning director, keeping in mind that you're speaking for all future planning directors. I mean, I don't know that I've, I don't know that I've seen all the interests that are involved, unless you'd like to just bow out at this point.
I thought he had a lifetime appointment.
Punt. Okay, if you want to punt, that's fine.
Well, I think it's fine to punt it because I think that's putting him in a really precarious position and you've got four commissioners that have polled and overruled you, so we're going to move forward. Okay, so.
Giving him a chance.
Next item. I think Karen said it best in that the sheriff has privy to information that the planning director is not and he can review it with legal counsel but not the planning director. So that's kind of where the decision came from. Next item. We got through that. I'm sorry? You want to go to lunch? But we could get through five more pages. Okay. Okay, we'll go to lunch and we'll be back here at 1 o'clock straight up. Thank you.